County Council is now in session. I will remind people, and I apologize, but if you're lining the wall, the York Fire Marshal says you cannot do that. So you have to go to a conference room on either side and down the hall. And our first order of business is invocation and pledge of allegiance to the Honorable Robert Winkler.
Thank you for this opportunity to get together, Lord. We ask you for wisdom to make the best decisions that are put before us this evening on the multitude of things we've got to vote on, Lord. Just give us, as I said, wisdom to do what is best for each and every one of those. Give us all safe travels. We'll go our separate ways. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Let's see. I don't believe we have any oath of office. So our first order of business will be Dr. Paul Cornley to, yes, sir. And if you would name an address when you come forward. Thank you, David.
Good evening, members of council. And thank you for sharing some of your valuable time with me this morning, or this afternoon, or this evening, depending on the time of day it is. I just want to talk to you a little bit about the services that we provide at Catawba Community Mental Health Center for the residents of York County. Now, you can all relax. I'm not going to ask you for money here tonight. So I just want to talk with you a little bit and brag a little bit on some of the services we provide. Catawba Mental Health Center is one of the seventeen mental health centers in the state of South Carolina. We are a public agency run by the South Carolina Department of Mental Health. So we are not a quasi-public or quasi-private agency, nor are we an entitlement program. We are a treatment center for treatment of individuals with mental illness. We have been in York County since 1961. I have personally not been here since that long, but we have been here since 1961. When we opened an office with two staff, we now have 110 staff at Catawba Community Mental Health Center. Our mission is to provide treatment and support to assist in the recovery of individuals with mental illness and their families. I now want to thank council. So I want to take this opportunity to thank you for your previous support of Catawba Community Mental Health Center. A few facts and figures about mental illness that some of you may or may not know. One in four of us will suffer from a diagnosable mental illness at some point in our lifetime. Mental illness is the second-leading cause of workforce disability in the United States and is projected to be number one by the year 2020. Cardiovascular disease is currently number one. Mental illness is the third most common reason for hospitalization for ages 18 through 44, and adults with mental illness die 25 years earlier than average. Let me tell you a little bit about the services we provide in York County. We currently serve 1,370 individuals in our adult clinic, ages 18 to 80, and about 950 in our child adolescent and family outpatient clinic, ages 3 to 18. They're both located in Rock Hill. We have a small clinic in Clover, coupled with our residential program there. We offer 120 housing opportunities for individuals with mental illness who cannot work because of their mental illness, and these are funded through HUD and grant-funded programs as well. We have a very robust school-based program in York County. We have over 20 school-based therapists working in the schools full-time. I am pleased to have a member of our board who works in New York. Number one, Carolyn Dingle is here, but I guess she stepped out in the hall. She was one of the ones lining the walls back there. In York County, we have four full-time MD psychiatrists. In our child clinic, we have two board-certified child and adolescent psychiatrists. Now, I don't know if you know there's a national shortage of that sub-specialty, but we're able to employ two of them right here in York County to serve our children and families. Our access standards are among the best in the country. We offer same-day care for urgent or emergent care and five-days' access for routine care. If you call our clinic and complain of a problem that is just fairly routine, we will offer you an appointment within five days. If your needs are urgent or emergent, we will tell you to just walk into the clinic. We send a master social worker to Moss Justice several times a month to review all those on suicide watch and to see anyone that the nurse there at Moss Justice wants us to see. We don't charge for that service. We also provide medicine for the inmates at Moss Justice if their clients are ours, if the medicine that they take is not on the Moss Justice formulary. We are currently providing assessments for orders of detention through the probate judge's office here in York County. Again, we don't charge for those services. We have a growing peer support program where we hire individuals in recovery from mental illness to work with other individuals who may be stuck in their recovery or who may be homeless. There's no more powerful outreach than somebody who can say, "Look at me now. I'm working. I'm a productive member of society." You too can be a productive member of society. Finally, we have submitted a large grant to SAMPA, which is a federal grant, to provide a medical home for our clients. Remember, individuals with mental illness die 25 years earlier than average. Many of our clients do not have a primary care physician. They use the emergency room, which costs these hospitals millions of dollars a year, for routine care. What we want to do is to hire a physician or an APRN to work in our clinics to provide general medical care just for our clients, to coordinate the mental health care and the medical care that they so need to reduce costs, and we will monitor morbidity and mortality changes as well. We're moving our adult clinic in Rock Hill to the old VA outpatient clinic on Constitution Boulevard in Rock Hill, and we'll have an open house when we do that, and we'll invite you all to come to that open house to meet with some of our staff. In the fall, I do hope to come back with a modest proposal requesting a reinstatement of some funding for Catawba Mental Health for some of the programs I just mentioned above. But right now, I just want to thank you for listening, and I'm available if anybody has any questions.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. So now we have the public forum. This is where you have two minutes to speak. If I call your name and you're here for a public hearing on a rezoning issue, you'll want to wait because otherwise you're restricted to two minutes. If you wait for the public hearing, you can speak as long as you want to speak. So if I don't catch it like the first one, Janet, is that Longson?
Longston.
Longston.
Is the number eight on the end in the rezoning, is that the public hearing?
Yeah, case number 1509?
Yes.
Okay, you need to wait then. And Jerry, we've already talked, so we got that cleared up. Let's see. Lisa, and if I'm reading your last name correctly, Heiburger? Heibergen?
Berg.
Berger? Same thing, a rezoning case, okay. And Joe Costner? And if you would, give your name and address.
Joe Costner, 1900 Polaris Road, York, South Carolina, 29745. Gentlemen, lady, and gentlemen, thank you for this opportunity. I moved here to York County after retiring from the U.S. Military and the Defense Department, and I must say that I've enjoyed every year of it. With regard to the special tax district in Rock Hill for the infrastructure improvement, I think that's a great idea. We need improvements to infrastructure all across the county. But let's be fair about it. When I moved here to York County, I inquired with York County road folks about paving Polaris Road. I was informed that it would probably be about four to five years to do that. Well, that's 18 years ago, and I'm still waiting for the road to be paved. The residents of Polaris Road pay some of the highest taxes in York County simply because we're on Lake Wiley. Now, if we were to get the same tax benefits that you're proposing for the Rock Hill people, we too could pave our road, pay for our own infrastructure. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. Next person is Eric Carpenter. Is that also a rezoning?
Yes, it is.
Okay, you're gonna wait. Linda Cox. Linda Cox. In case she's out in the hallway, I'll wait a minute or so. I don't hear any feet coming down the hallway there, so I guess there's no Linda Cox. Mary Williams?
Resoning.
Rezoning issue. Last one, looks like the same thing. Lynn Sherrill? Okay, well, we'll move on. First order of business is a public hearing. Hold a public hearing of an ordinance authorizing a Second Amendment to the intergovernmental agreement binding between the City of Rock Hill and York County relating to the Textile Corridor redevelopment plan, the amended downtown redevelopment plan, the Red River redevelopment plan, the Manchester Village redevelopment plan, and other matters related thereto. This is the second public hearing we're holding. That might be a first for the council. So just to be different, I'm gonna hear those that are against first. So anybody against this ordinance? Against?
Mood to close.
Yes, sir.
Close that part.
Paul, give your name and address.
Okay. Paul Anderco, 140 Front Porch Drive, Rock Hill. I don't know if I'm for or against exactly, but I have concerns, so I guess I'll, to answer the concerns, I'll be more against. I want to thank you very much. I'm very proud of the council for negotiating. That's what I talked about about a month ago last time. I was very proud that you took up that project, and it's not easy to do, and I'm real proud of you. The city has not always been transparent with its own citizens in Rock Hill. That's why I'm really proud of the county council to dig out this information, which, living in the city and going to the meetings, we don't get this much information because you're always in executive session. What is good about the agreement is exclusion of the Rock Hill Utility System from receiving funds, remedy to failure to provide reports, except for Section F, where they can end up in mediation or the courts. This way, the city does not really have to give you the accurate reporting on time. So once you go into mediation, it could take forever to get reports, and I like to see Section F taken out of the agreement. Also, I like, you know, I'm happy on the ongoing construction reports, the increase of private ownership, and the limitation of city ownership. I think that's very important because you need to get the tax dollars in, so you need private industry. What bothers me the most in this is, in your agreement with the city, is public transportation. To let the city build a transit system with county money, I'm against. Also, if you added in your agreement, you wanted it to go to Piedmont and the York Tech area, the public transportation, but that is out of the TIF area, and I think, you know, the Knowledge Park area. So you really can't add them into the, to the TIF. So I like to see that wording changed also. Also, you know, just talking to some of the council members, that I hope you had more than enough time to study what the developer has offered, the city, and that you dot your i's, cross your t's on the proposal because, you know, I hate to see the developer walk away from something that the taxpayers get, have to eat the money for. But I think it's very important. I'm, like I said, I'm just gonna make it short because I'm real proud of you all doing what you have to do. And to me, you did your homework, and I'm very proud of you. And, you know, please, after the meeting, when you talk about this, you have to dot your i's, cross your t's with the city because I don't believe they have given you all the information that you need. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Appreciate it. And I'll say one more time, anybody against? There being none? Any, oh, okay. I should've known better. Aren't you right?
How you doing? Me again, Reagan Craig, 1804 Craig Road, Rock Hill. Well, I want to tell the council, thank you very much for having another public hearing, and I was really looking forward to getting all the new information and the changes to the agreement and everything else, and it was stuck right in the middle of 251 pages of county stuff on the website. And after I dug through it and found it, lo and behold, it's the same old thing. You go in there and look at it. The only difference is that, okay, now there's a timeframe for getting the reports in, and the reports are gonna look like on Schedule B, which was incomplete and not attached. So you don't know information there. The next part that was missing, it's basically the same agreement all over again. Nothing has changed. I don't know what was negotiated, but then again, the information's not there. So instead of being able to hear and to talk about the facts and go into the details, which is what I personally would prefer to do, what's created is a situation of mistrust. We had a long talk at an old farmer's shed over the weekend about the TIF agreement, and nobody knows anything that's in it. Nobody knows anything new at this public hearing from what was on the webpage to today. That's not transparency in government. That's not accountability. And this is the problem, so that's just why I'm, one of the reasons I'm against the TIF, is that time and time again, because it is for the public to have a public comment period. And to not give them the information and have two public hearings with no information, what's the public supposed to talk to you about? So then what happens? Then the conversation digresses to only the things that you know that you can talk about. And I'll give you a perfect example. I've got a few simple questions that most people should already have the answers to before the public hearing. What specific projects are specified and detailed out? How much is this gonna cost the county taxpayers? And who's getting the money? Not a single one of you up there, I don't think, surprise me. I wish you'd done it before the public hearing, can answer those questions. The answers aren't there, but yet we're having a public hearing. So then you say, well, then the only thing you can do is give it what we call the old smell test and say, "Why is this thing moving so fast, so thoroughly, in such a hurry without any information?" Rock Hill had an agreement for 26 years, and their growth is somewhere roughly in the neighborhood of a million bucks. It failed miserably. So they want another 24 years to get us how much? Who knows? I don't think you can tell me tonight. Or if you can, you haven't made it public. So if I'm making some accusations, it's because you haven't told the public. And to give an example, when you go through the smell test, you just take it one at a time. So I'm gonna start with you, Mr. Winkler. The last meeting, last public hearing, you said the city of Rock Hill, "Oh, they sent us all these documents, a stack this high." In 26 years, full narrative reports, that stack would be that high. Not a bunch of discombobulated, years missing, pieces here, pieces there, years skipped, the spreadsheets with no entry as what it was for, but dollars in the right. If you handed that, a prospectus like that to a potential stockholder, what would he tell you to do? See ya. Or a stockholders' meeting. What would happen? Then you go down the line, and you know, the last time I picked on bump a little bit about his campaign contribution, I didn't pick on Chad, about the property he owns in the TIF district. Didn't tell that. But what I did skip over was that Michael Johnson got $1,000 from Springs Development too, and had no competition in his election. So you start, as you're doing the smell test, you find things, and this is what the public hears. And then we get, and I've teased Brit about this, we're getting streetcarred. That's my new road, instead of railroaded. It's getting pushed on through because in the agreement, it just says they can come back and talk to you about the streetcar. I'm just putting it plain, folks. Nobody thinks we ought to pay for Rock Hill's little streetcar to ride back and forth to Winthropone. It's not when you have holes in the roads everywhere, everywhere you turn. We don't think it's a wise use of the money. The, as you, one of the things that I think is a transparent problem is it appears that all somebody's gotta do, if they want free government money these days, is walk up here and say, "I'm for economic development," and this is economic development. It's gonna create jobs, jobs, jobs. Can any of you tell me, describe to me, the jobs that Knowledge Park is gonna provide? Can you tell me in writing from Rock Hill, the list of how many jobs it's gonna create? It might create 1,000. That's what they say in the Astor every time they write another promo story for them, but nobody gives us any details. So how's the public supposed to decide? It is a well-known fact that cities all over South Carolina in this country are in decline and in decay. The city of Rock Hill is one quarter, they try to say 70,000, maybe. They play with, the census puts them at 50-something thousand of 200,000 people in this county. They're one quarter of us. Their debt is double, roughly double, the county general fund. And all cities, if you go look at them, they're in deep decline, clawing for money, whether it's hospitality tax, economic development tax. If you think every economic development deal is a great deal, well, let's go get George Shin and dust him off and do another nice stadium. 30 years later, what'd you clear and give back to economic, 800,000 last meeting? Gee whiz, guys, in 30 years, you could've made more money than that working at McDonald's. That was not a good economic development deal. And the county council, for those of us that try to pay attention and try to realize what's going on, it's your job, your stewardship, to look after property taxes that are on property in this county. That is your only taxing vehicle, other than pennies, for some road improvements. You really have, you can influence it. But let's use LPL Financial as an example. When they moved to York County, it is a boon for the tax base for the state, which we're a part of, of South Carolina. Now, tell me, how many jobs, local jobs, is LPL Financial gonna create because they're already working there? They're just moving the headquarters across the state line. They're gonna put, if there's 3,000 employees, according to county statistics, that means 6,000 more kids into the school systems up Airport Mill. It means more traffic on the road up there, and our tax base will not grow from it to keep up with the cost of it. Is it economic development for the state? Yes. For the county? Maybe. Maybe not. GD Tire down in Richburg is going to hire 750 people from Chester and York County. There's a tangible answer of economic development. The problem we have here is that with Rock Hill, their track history is not good. Whether they meant to, whether he did this or who did that, doesn't matter. It failed. Go to the bank with that garbage and see what they'll tell you. And when you, and as time goes on, you pick up the Herald and you read, "They're just proud of it. The mayor's son and one of the head recipients of this, what I call special interest welfare, instead of tax increment, have bought a building downtown." That doesn't, it's the appearance of their impropriety. County council's got, you got a tough job. You got a lot of money that you're gonna be short on, on taxes and stuff, and this is one of the reasons. It's when you don't look at it from, you're responsible for the property tax. You're not responsible for Rock Hill's. Rock Hill can raise their city's property taxes instead of ours. It's like a slippery slope. I've heard figures on what we're not gonna get or gonna get range from 300,000 to 5 million over the 10-year extension. Nobody knows the real number, do you? Don't you think the public ought to know so that you'll be accountable and transparent to them before they go to the polls next go around? Don't you think we ought to be told first? That's the real issue here, is that it's moving along, moving along, moving along. We're gonna pass it, we're gonna pass it, and no facts are out there. That's really my main beef. I don't know whether I'm for or against it. So until I know what's in it, I'm against it. Because I was brought up, you don't buy a pig and a po. Thank y'all for your time.
Thanks, Reagan. Last call. Anybody else? David?
Thank y'all for allowing us to speak on this topic. I wish that there'd been some details on it so that we could dive in and have a stronger opinion on specifics, but unfortunately, since hadn't been let out on that, it's impossible to do that. I mean, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna keep this thing at a high level and not be taking very long. The way I see this, we have, Rock Hill has this aggressive development plan in order to try to revitalize downtown. It's not the first time they've done that. In fact, this is an extension to one which the county's already helped, already bought into. That was not the first one either. As cities in the South have lost business in downtown areas in favor of suburban development, a lot of cities have spent money from wherever they could get it to try to revitalize things and attract business. This is another attempt. The way I view this, this deal with, between county and cities, Rock Hill says, "We got a development project down here. Try to revitalize downtown. We want you to help pay for it." You don't know what they're gonna spend the money on. You don't know how much money you're gonna give them. You ain't got a clue what the return on the investment is. From the county standpoint, my perspective is, is we're gonna spend money, mine and yours, in hopes of getting a higher return after, was it, 2039? In hopes of getting a higher return. I notice you've negotiated a decrease in the amount of money we've got to pay if it's accepted by Rock Hill, starting soon, during the last 14 years of the original agreement. That's positive. But then you gotta pay another initial 10 years, and don't know what the return is, with the potential of getting a higher tax base. Would you invest your money on something that flimsy? I'm sure you wouldn't, and I don't appreciate you investing mine that way. I mean, man, you need to, really, really gotta have some specifics, y'all. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Last call. Anybody else against? There being no others? Anybody wants to speak in favor?
Members of council, my name is Manning Kimmel, 1862 Oak Park Road, Rock Hill, South Carolina, and I also chair the York County Economic Development Board. As I mentioned before, council has charged us with creating jobs, jobs that will improve the livelihood of citizens in York County, and we thank you for the support that you've given us a number of times in the past to improve the incentives that have been necessary for us to be competitive with other communities, which these businesses were considering before they located here in York County. We appreciate the extensive due diligence that council has performed on the proposed tax increment district, and as council knows, the York County Economic Development Board has taken formal action in support of this proposal. I happen to be rereading a section of the county code, 153.32, Section C, which talks about the purpose of the Economic Development Board, and I quote, "To promote and encourage industrial development, private business and commercial enterprise, agricultural production, industrial and commercial expansion, and the utilization and investment of capital within the county. We feel that the proposed district does exactly that. Invest only new tax revenue, not existing tax revenue, into a blighted area that will create jobs. We thank you for all that you're doing to support economic development here in York County." Thank you.
Thank you, Manning. Anybody else want to speak in favor? We have a motion to close?
Mood to close.
Have a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those no. Next item. Hold a public hearing and consider first reading of an ordinance to amend the Code of the County of York, South Carolina, disposal of waste at County Landfill, Chapter 33, Section 50.33B, in order to provide for an increase in fees for the disposal of municipal solid disposal of municipal solid waste, construction and demolition debris, and land clearing debris at the county landfill, and to provide for other matters related thereto. Uh, anybody here want to speak in favor? Anybody opposed? Have a motion to close?
Move to close.
Have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Do we have a new motion?
Move to approve first reading?
Second.
Discussion? Yes, sir. Mr. Henderson?
Um, if I remember, something of this nature, if not, maybe some, may have been identical as far as what was brought up, brought up about a year or two ago, and I know it was mentioned, if I remember correctly, about the possibility of, uh, taking care of our own recycling, and, um, the possibility of, um, instead of selling all of our recyclables, uh, and outsource so much, that maybe we could take care of our own. And what I'd like to do, I don't, I don't recall, and correct me if I'm wrong, uh, I'd like to see some kind of a report on, maybe what we could do if we did it in-house versus outsourcing, to see if, if, if there's a big money difference, to where we could offset the cost of this, and possibly keep overall, having to spend out less money as a result of us doing it in-house. Uh, and maybe have some kind of report over five years, eight years, or something like that. Uh, did, did we ever do that?
We can give you that. We do our own recycling, uh, we process, then we process, we sell them to market, we collect revenues on that. Now with the dropping inmate numbers, we have had to send some of the material out for, for private processing, which we can't handle presently. Now from a standpoint of ways, we handle our own construction, demolition debris, we operate our own landfill there, municipal, solid waste, household waste. That does get a different type of landfill, a class three landfill, this is a landfield located in Richmond County. We cannot do that in York County. We can't permit, uh, an MSF landfill.
Is any portion of this a part of not having the right equipment, or the right machinery and things like that, to do any of it with? Okay, um, well, I, I'll move forward on this, but I'd like to discuss this further at some point, if you don't mind, sir.
Thank you, Bruce. Chad, is that your hand up?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I just put my water bottle in the wrong way up here.
Uh, any, any, any other comments? Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Next item, rezoning action, consider first reading in public hearing of case number fifteen oh seven, request to rezone property from BD three to ID, I said it correctly, uh, one hundred Spring Lake Road in New York community. Uh, anybody here want to speak in favor? Yes, sir. And when you come up, be sure to give your name and address.
My name's Al Hazelton. I'm attorney in Clover, South Carolina, through North Main Street, and I'm here representing John and Blanche Black who own this property. Uh, and the actual request to rezone is to industrial conditional. The only thing they wanted to rezone industrial for is for wood pallet manufacturing. Uh, they leased it to a party to do that, uh, did not realize it was outside the zoning, they were cited, and then they began this process to have the property rezoned. Uh, this involves building, uh, it's, it's a enclave within property owned by, a large tract owned by John and Blanche Black. Uh, the building on the property was built about forty years ago. Uh, there's not gonna be an increase in intensity, uh, as pointed out by staff. The fence that encloses the property was built approximately thirty years ago. Uh, for thirty years, the tract was used to house a trucking business that operated six tractors and twenty trailers out of that site. Uh, after that, that was Black Trucking Company. The Black family has owned this property and its surrounding property on these corners. It's at this corner of Spring Lake Road and Highway five, for about a hundred and fifty years. Uh, and, uh, the, um, after the, um, Eddie Black ran the trucking company, uh, after him, it was run by, uh, there was another trucking company there, there's been a Murray Major Construction Company there, Wagner Trucking, uh, also ran six tractors and twenty trailers out of that site. They moved just across the street on Spring Lake Road, uh, so that operation is still going on there. The proposed uses for a wood pallet manufacturer, uh, they'll be, as opposed to trucking company, no oil, no grease, uh, minimal noise, uh, a reduction, if not, uh, exclusion of fumes that would be generated. It's important that you know also that the company that's going in here employs, uh, fifteen people. It's a company that recycles wood pallets with a corresponding reduction of pressure on the landfill. I think the owner of CWF will speak, and, uh, what he has told me, he has, they estimate that approximately a thousand and fifty tons of, uh, materials have been kept out of landfills just last year. The property is presently zoned BD three. Uh, all the property on the four corners of this intersection are BD three, catty-cornered. Well, right beside this on the corner is a old used car operation, I think it's a flea market operation there, catty-cornered. It's a major farm market owned by Arthur Black, which sees considerable traffic in and out, all of, all of, most of the year. And again, on the other corner is Wagner Trucking Company, which runs the trucking operation out. Uh, I point all this out to say that this is a busy, active intersection, uh, where this property is located, and what would be taking place there is not out of, inconsistent or out of character with what is going on in the surrounding properties. I'd also point out that it is, that the tract, portion of this tract, they're actually to be rezoned, uh, industrial, conditional, as a pallet manufacturer, is completely surrounded by other property owned by, uh, John and Blanche Black, that is zoned BD three. Uh, every one of the property owners that surrounds the larger tract has submitted, we've submitted a statement from them, that they have no objection to the property being rezoned conditionally for this purpose. Uh, that is in the staff's record. The, um, to address some of the, uh, objections the staff had, the proposed zoning is not consistent with the comprehensive plan. This is on Highway five, which has been enlarged to a, a major four-way thoroughfare, it's just right off of Highway five, uh, which I don't know was envisioned by the comprehensive plan at the time it was done, or, or what has, uh, developed there as far as these trucking companies. This, and not inconsistent with, it's not consistent with the character of the community. Uh, I disagree with that because of the, the activities that's gone on there before, uh, and that will, are going on now. Uh, it will allow development at a much higher density than is appropriate for the area. This is not gonna increase any density. It's gonna make use of an existing building that's been there for forty years, been in use, uh, in an enclosed area that was enclosed with the fence thirty years ago. Uh, it's carving out the, we'll add a third zoning district. Uh, there are many parcels, I couldn't identify all of them, of course, staff may know, uh, that'll have multiple zoning within them. But again, this property is, uh, completely surrounded by BD three, owned by the Blacks. Uh, the surrounding area is BD three. Uh, what will be done there is, uh, manufacturing activities inside the building, which is some storage of inventory, uh, on the grounds inside the fenced enclosure. Uh, that is much less, uh, intrusive or, um, bad than many things that could be done with the BD three, uh, zoning classification. Much less, not the light, not the traffic, uh, not the, uh, constant traffic that is can involve, be involved with many BD three activities. So, uh, the, uh, conditional zoning request received unanimous, uh, approval from the planning commission, and, uh, at one of the unusual meetings, all of them were there. Uh, so, uh, we would respectfully request that, uh, council approve this conditional zoning. They, the, the, the one thing I think we've heard, from complaint-wise, is the inventory that can be seen as you pass by, it's, again, it's completely enclosed in the fence, they plan to, and will agree, to install the stripping in that fence that will, uh, keep that from view of the traveling public. But, again, this is not inconsistent or out of character with the, the very limited, uh, conditional zoning requests that they are making, and we, we respectfully request the council approve the, uh, rezoning conditional application.
Thanks, sir. Anybody else in favor? Yes, sir.
I'm Ed Pinson. I'm the president of CWF Creating, and, uh, I'm a senior partner, managing partner, of the organization. And I'd like to hand out something that I just put together very briefly today.
Just hand it.
I'd like to have little talking points. I appreciate you, gentlemen and ladies, uh, hearing me tonight. Uh, I'd like to give you just a down and dirty, uh, economic impact, what we've done over the course of, uh, the last almost three years, since we took this organization over in two thousand thirteen. Uh, and it's my humble opinion that they were about thirty to forty-five days from bankruptcy at the time. Uh, nothing ever, you, you don't get all of the information when you go through your due diligence, which we did. And, uh, anyway, that's just my humble opinion about what's going on. When we took the organization over two thousand thirteen, uh, we started, uh, with three employees. Currently, we have grown, we have upped that fivefold. We have fifteen employees now, uh, at that location. Our initial location was next to Southern Gas out on one sixty-one, which, to me, this is a far better fit and location, uh, as far as what we're doing out there than the location was out on one sixty-one. Um, I'm, I'm not a zoning expert, I just know that, that this is a much better fit, and, and frankly, would probably can, be considered, uh, if you, if you went out to where we were versus where we are now, I think you would probably agree. All right? Um, our estimated job growth through two thousand seventeen, uh, this, of course, is based on, on several things going on, but, uh, we're pretty certain that we're gonna grow, uh, at the very least twenty percent per year. Uh, we know, we're, we're targeting to have over twenty employees by two thousand seventeen. Uh, we are in the process of negotiating some things with Meritor, who is a local company here, as everybody I'm sure knows, uh, to handle their recyclables, uh, and prevent them from hitting a landfill. And also, we're in negotiation with McLean Power, over in the Business Park, to handle, uh, some of their business as well, and also receive some of their, uh, some of their recyclable lumber. Uh, just to give you the, uh, a, a small look at our employees, Western York County, once again, I don't know what the pay scales are in Western York County, but I will tell you that the average pay of one of our employees is thirteen dollars twenty-one cents an hour. Uh, to me, that would, I would figure out in Western York County, knowing what I do and live in Western York County, I do live at two forty-nine South Pershiva Road, there's not a lot of industry out there. Okay? Um, that seems like a pretty good salary. With overtime, uh, these guys out there will make over thirty thousand dollars a year, on average. Uh, all the employees reside right there, and, and probably within about an eight mile radius of that shop. So they don't have to jump in their car and drive to Charlotte, or to Fort Mill, or to Rock Hill, or whatever. Uh, you know, that has a, a, a good impact, environmental impact, as far as, you know, road travel and things of that nature. Uh, we have about eight subcontractors who bring, we have a gentleman who is seventy-nine years old, who brings recyclable pallets to us. Uh, the gentleman is out there in his truck, and he brings them once a week. We have eight guys that, that are, are somewhat basing their livelihood on whether or not they can get that, get that material in to us. So you, you jump right there to twenty-three people, okay? We're not a huge company, but it is making a difference. Um, we, our estimated payroll this year will be somewhere around a neighborhood of four hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Okay? Not too shabby for a small company in Western York County. Um, fourth quarter, we had, we had, fourth quarter two thousand fourteen, we reinvested sixty thousand dollars, uh, into our business. We bought trucks locally. We bought machinery locally. We, we have, you know, we have our, our machinery and our, our vehicles, our trailers, everything is ser, is serviced right here in York County. We are having an economic impact. It is a ripple effect, you know? They say you throw a pebble in a lake and it ripples forever, okay? Uh, we'd like to think that we are one of them. What does that mean? Dollars, revenue, back to the county. Um, the environmental impact, uh, our current recycling, our recycling programs through two thousand fourteen kept one thousand fifty tons of solid waste out of area landfills. Once again, I said, we're in, we're in, uh, negotiation with Meritor right now. If we do this contract with Meritor, that number will double. They generate twenty tons a month of solid waste. We will take that solid waste, we'll separate what we can use of it, and, uh, we have another company that we're working in coordination with. We will handle all of the wood fiber. The other company will handle all plastics, all corrugated. So your paper, plastics, everything will be handled that are coming out of there, and that's one of the guarantees that I've got to sign, that, you know, there will only be a minimal percentage that ever hits a landfill. That is an agreement, that's, that's a key part of the agreement, that we are going through right now. Uh, we already have recycling programs with little companies like Akuma, up in South Charlotte, Phoenix Metals. Uh, we came up with an interesting concept within, with, uh, Phoenix Metals, we went in and the, they're, they put their, their flat metal product on what's called a skid, and it's, basically, it looks like a great big pallet. It's on four-by-fours or six-by-sixes, it's massive. What they were having a problem with, we went in and, and started to talk to them about doing some new business for them. What we found was that they were shipping tons and tons and tons of this product, either into York County or into, uh, northern Mecklenburg County, and it was hitting landfills over there. Okay? What we have been able to do is take the usable portions, which almost, there almost are, I mean, it's minimal, minimal waste that comes out of this product. We strip the product back, rebuild it like new, and sell it to them at a discounted rate. It's a win-win situation, all the way around. Pending recycle, recycle programs are, uh, Meritor, I've, I've told you gentlemen and ladies about that, uh, Alro Metals, Colormate, out of Gastonia, Timken Gaffney and Union, we're about to, we're, we're working with another recycling company to take in their fiber products and, and redo those, uh, as well. Fena USA, out of Rock Hill, we're looking at taking their corrugated, uh, plastics, everything, and, and we're working in coordination with ISS, who is also a gentleman that, that lives here in York County, Richard Murray, uh, owns the company. He is based out of, uh, about, uh, out of the Calpins area though, is where the company's based, but we're trucking, we're trucking the product back and forth, so he can utilize the recyclables, and we're picking up, you know, broken pallet stock from him, and bringing it back in. Uh, we are going to try to work with Wyma, who was a, who was another company here in York County. We're working to get to, to, uh, add some additional equipment down, so we can even break the products down further into recyclable. We, we're looking for something to break down into what's called biomass. Um, take all the scrap that's left over from any broken pieces, whatever, pump it into, or pump it into a, a chipper, and it'll gra, it'll grind that down to a biomass type of product, and we can ship that down back to pharmaceutical up in the Nor, North Carolina, uses a ton of it, they run there, they're running there an entire facility off of biomass up there. So we really, really are cognizant of what's going on with the environment, trying to keep these landfills clear, and are making a significant impact at it. Okay, I mentioned before, uh, the thousand fifty tons that were kept out of landfill, Meritor, we're gonna double that number. Corporate citizenship, we feel like we're pretty doggone good corporate citizens, too. Um, we're a corporate sponsor for the little Cougars here. I know everybody's interested in football around here, but, uh, we are the corporate sponsor. Uh, we work in coordination with Shane Binfield, who does a lot of great things, uh, with that football program, for Bobby Carroll, so forth and so on, for, at, at York Comprehensive High School. Uh, many of our staff, our staff members are encouraged, uh, to go out and do things with the youth, uh, particularly there, we're heavily involved with the sporting programs, baseball, football, basketball. Uh, I know myself, I, I coach for many- I know myself, I coached for many, many years. One of, two, both of the other senior partners in this business, their coaches as well, they coach baseball teams, don't even have children in the programs, but they just like to give of their time, as do I, to help these children in the community. And the majority of our staff are all involved in some sort of civic or church programs around. So, you know, you're dealing with a company that's, we're pretty doggone good corporate citizens and we, we, we really try hard to do the right things, both for the environment, for the community, so forth. So I'd appreciate all your help in this matter and thank you for hearing me.
Thanks, sir. Anybody else in favor? Anybody opposed? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Beth Bridges, 248 Spring Lake Road in York. And we want to thank you, our neighborhood, several members of our neighborhood are here this evening, so we want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to come and speak.
Yes, ma'am.
We have a lot of questions about what's going on up there. You know, they've mentioned several conditions. I've got pictures, if you guys would allow me to pass them down for you to see. He mentioned putting slats in the fence. That's not going to cover it. It's so high up, that fence that's there is not going to cover it. And yes, the building may have been there forty years and the fence thirty years, but it wasn't there like that when we all moved in. We've seen it be a pipeline, when the pipeline came in, it was housed for that. It's been a flea market, which was a monstrosity too. It was a lime green building with pink on it. We've seen horses being housed up there and we, over the last few years, we've watched a lot of things go on up there. And the biggest concern that we have is, you know, someone mentioned surrounding properties don't have an issue. Well, our neighborhood has, neighborhood has an issue with it because it's a mess. It's a monstrosity. When people come to visit, different people in the neighborhood, they're like, what is that, what is that? You know, it's a mess. It doesn't look good. We have been told, we don't know if it's true, so we have questions about it, that they're possibly putting a kiln in there that's going to burn wood, that's going to have chemicals on it. Is that going to be polluting our air? Has an environmental study been done to prove that? You know, like I said, the biggest problem that we're all having is, it's a mess. It's, you know, not even a football field bone becomes residential. Now, we don't live in mansions, but we live in nice homes that we work hard for and we don't want that to eventually decrease our value. Because I think everybody, I can speak for everybody that's in the neighborhood, if we all tried to sell our houses or if we were buying one of those houses, I wouldn't buy a house with all that down there. It's a mess. The trucking company was there, there was a cabotage place when we all first moved in, the trucking company moved over. It's a monstrosity too. So, I mean, it's a mess up there. So I hope that you guys will talk about it and consider, you know, if it does stay, there needs to be another fence or some bushes that are high enough to cover that. Because, you know, as you can see from the pictures, would you want to live around that? I mean, it's, you know, it's just a mess. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else opposed?
My name is Eddie Martinez and I honor everyone that's here tonight. I am not here really to go against what they're doing, but what my neighbor said, she's right in a lot of ways about putting a fence that you cannot look inside, but I'm just concerned about something. Mr. Blackwell, is it okay if I ask him a question?
Well, not right now, sir. You need to ask him outside.
Okay, then. I want him to listen to me. What I'm concerned about is that I heard, and sometimes I was telling my wife, she was with me, I said, we can't go over what you heard. But it came to my ears and that bothered me, that I wanted to ask him what he's going to do with the waste. I come from up north. I came here from my country when I was nine years old. And believe me, I know the things that went up there with environment, you know? We ruined, they ruined rivers and ruined so much that it's really pitiful, you know? And this is a beautiful town. My kids moved up there twenty years ago. And I wish this place was here, I would have told my mother to give me birth here, because I love this town, love the people, love everyone. And it blows my mind, when he got up and prayed, you don't see that up north at all. You don't see it at all. And that's a blessing, even when I go to school, we went to play last night there, they were praying. Say, honey, I wish I would see it way before that. And even when I went to court, you know, to pay a ticket because my steel belt. But I want to ask him a question, is this, what are they going to do with the waste? This is what I heard, that they're going to take the waste and put some kind of chemical on it, and after they put the chemical, they're going to burn it there. That's what I heard. But I heard about it cheaper and all that. And that's going to happen, all that is going to go up in the air. And that, I live right down the street from them. And I know, maybe I go in there for him to give me a part-time job, who knows? But the thing is this, I'm concerned about that, you know, about the smell and the burning, you know? But anything else, you know, if, I'm sure that if they grow, I'm sure they're going to put a fence, you know, maybe nine, ten foot tall, that they don't have to see all that crap in there, because it is a beautiful town, you know? I hate to see that. I don't know what Arthur and John had to say about that, but it is a beautiful town and, but that's beside the point. This is what I want to say here tonight about the, what they're going to do with the waste. But I heard that he said, I think they're going to haul it away. I couldn't hear it too good back there. But if they're going to do that, but if they're going to burn it and they're going to put chemicals in there, that's not, that's not going to be too good. Thank you for listening to me.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Yes, sir. Anybody else opposed? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name's Michelle Hughes. I live on 276 Spring Lake. I'm a neighbor to this property as well. And I have several concerns about it. About a year ago, our speed limit on the road was forty-five miles an hour. It took our entire neighborhood over a year to get it reduced down to thirty-five miles an hour, because since the buildings and houses have gone up on our road, from the developments, we've had a lot of children move in and a lot of us like to walk at night, walk our dogs, whatever the case may be. And the speed limit was reduced down to thirty-five miles an hour last year. Well, since this company has moved in, yes, there's more employees and jobs and things like that, however, the traffic has doubled on our road and none of the traffic is obeying by the speed limit. The cops are out there routinely from our complaints, monitoring it, but people are still speeding nightly. I walk my dogs every night to their company and back home. And I don't feel safe doing it. It's very hard. My dogs get scared and skittish from all the traffic related to this. They hear noises coming from that company in the building inside and it scares and makes them skittish, so sometimes I can't even walk up to the end of the road, I have to stop before that. And that's a concern of mine. I'm scared, there's children on the street that are going to get hit, things like that. And we don't have a sidewalk, so, because I believe that's because we're in the county, but I'm not a hundred percent sure behind that. There's a lot of trash also in the road near the company. I don't know if it's a cause of the business or the employees or the traffic going in and out, but there's been an increased amount of waste in the road from people littering. They mentioned that they've been in business for several years. They just moved into this location in less than a year ago. I think that's great that they have a successful business, but they moved in knowing that this property was not zoned as industrial, it was just a business property. So that's a concern of mine, why would they move there knowing this? I'm highly concerned with the chemicals going in the air if a kiln is put in, breathing that in, especially walking my dogs right down the road next to it. I have asthma and other lung issues, so that scares me and will probably force me to sell my house and leave the area if that does happen. They mentioned surrounding properties had no issues. On the surrounding property, I have a huge issue. It's a huge mess. I'm okay with them putting up a fence so we can't see it, but right now, it's an eyesore and I would have never bought my house four years ago if that was there. So I'm concerned about my house market and me reselling it eventually and having that business be there and having it look like that. So, those are my concerns. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else opposed? Do we have a motion to close?
My name is Judy Martinez. I live at 24 Spring Lake Road. That was my husband up here. I always want to say thank you so much for the state. I do have to say that. I'm not shining your shoes or making you feel good, I'm telling you the truth from my heart. I thank God that you pray and I thank God the way you keep this state. We did buy our home, it'd be almost six years ago, and that eyesore up there wasn't there. It is an eyesore. I don't want to step on anyone's toes or anyone's progress of having a business, but I say, I know there's a lot of empty buildings. Why there? Why there? And it is, it has, within a year, it has grown and it is an eyesore. And I'm really concerned about the chemicals. My husband and I, we picked this place to retire. Our children moved up here twenty years ago, like he said, and I want to retire with a good, good memory. And I appreciate very much for you listening.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else opposed?
Hello, my name is Brittany Farrar. I'm 214 Pendergrass Road. I'm also neighbors of them. I agree with everything they have said. I do believe it is an eyesore. I also have dogs and I'm trying to have a child eventually. So with my dog right now, she has anxiety really bad and with the noise, I mean, I just, I have to take, you know, real bad cautions with her. So yes, I would prefer the company to you not to rezon. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else opposed? Yes, sir.
My name is Tal Yang. I'm on 249 Spring Lake Road. And I like to say that I agree with basically all my neighbors. And I deeply oppose the business down the road because I live less than a mile away from it. And it is a very, it is a very, it's sore to the eye to see that is. And I'm pretty sure that there's other places in York County that they could definitely go to, that is. And that's basically, that's I have to say.
Thanks, sir. Anybody else opposed? There being none, do we have a motion to close?
Move to close.
Have a second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Do we have a new motion?
I have talked to many of the property owners around the area and the business owner and the property owner of the property and discussed all of these concerns and when we get into discussion, I'll bring up more of them, but at this time, I move to approve the rezoning with the conditions that were, came from zoning board.
Second.
Okay, discussion.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
As I said earlier, I've talked to several of the residents down the road. I actually have some clients who live down the road who I've talked to about it. The biggest concern I've heard from all of them, including tonight, is the way the property looks. And I expressed that concern with the property owner and with the business owner on more than one occasion and have been assured that before final reading, that will be taken care of. There will be not just a privacy fence, but a completely reworking of that backyard area to clean that up and to get it that way and keep it that way. Was told that it was, when they moved, it was a fairly short notice type thing and they moved in and just kind of unloaded the trucks and dumped it off and they're in the process of cleaning it up and doing that now, but I expressed that concern. I also asked the question, because I had heard about kiln and chemicals and that type thing, and was assured, one, that there are no chemicals that will be sprayed on anything. And the kiln, if it's put in and used, they have one at their old location, will not be used for burning of any waste product or anything. It will be used to kiln dry the wood that they may need to build their crate or whatever. Most of what they buy is kiln dried already, but occasionally they buy some that's not and it goes into that kiln. I was told that they've used it about three times in the last five years, but occasionally they can't buy what material they need kiln dried and they dry the wood with the kiln. They do not incinerate wood or burn anything and don't use any chemicals, from what I've been told. And so, you know, with all of that said and with the understanding that there are two more readings before this becomes final, that's why I'm supporting it at this point.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I wanted to make a few comments. I know we get staff's, staff's notes of approval or denial and certainly from sitting up here, we have to look at, I know I look at more than just what's at the location. We have to take into consideration, you know, our jobs coming along, you know, are they being good, good corporate citizens, are they being good neighbors, are they making a good faith effort to try to fit into this community? And certainly, the presentation spoke real highly of this, this company's involvement in the community. And certainly, when you see pictures, now, some of the pictures do raise a level of concern that I'm sure the neighbors were not too pleasing with, but something as cosmetic as appearance and the appearance of the property and how they keep the property, that definitely can be worked on. Certainly, I would be concerned if there was going to be some type of burning at the property that's going to give off fumes into, into the community, but certainly, if that's going to be anywhere utilized, I'm sure D-Hick's going to make sure any of that is not exposing the neighbors and residents to anything that it shouldn't be exposed to. But certainly, the job potential and not, you know, sacrificing the community for jobs, but, you know, we can work on the cosmetics of their appearance, you know? We can increase the fence height if that's agreeable with the planning department and make sure it's not as visible. But certainly, if, you know, the business is operating there now and it may be operating out of, out of the zoning, but I think this is something that can be massaged with the business and the community to, to make it something that's, that's worth changing the zoning up. So I'll support it with knowing that this owner and company will work with the community to try to eliminate those concerns, definitely on their appearance. You know, I see some of the pictures and we have an actual pallet refurbishing place in Rock Hill and you ride by and obviously, you're going to be able to see it, but, you know, it should be in a manner that's not as, as much as an eyesore. But like I said, you know, give him some time and, you know, Robert has spoken with him and wanting to work with the situation, so I think it's something that we can, we can do and definitely by third reading, the residents and neighbors can, can be a little more comfortable with it and certainly, I'm sure this gentleman's going to make every effort because it's his livelihood, you know? He's not wanting to just flop a company down and turn his back on the community because that's how he makes his money, that's how he's able to support families in the community. So I'll support this reading.
Thanks, sir. Anybody else? Yes, yes, Mr. Williams, that's all.
Yeah, I was just going to mention that government moves slow for a reason sometimes. They, if you know what was told to Mr. Winkler, if there can come and if we can make everybody happy, that would be great. I guess the reason that I spoke is I heard that something mentioned about conditions. I didn't, I don't have conditions in my packet, so I'd like to see what those are and then certainly, I think we could include the absence of an incinerator as part of those conditions. But, but it does move slow for a purpose if they, if they do what the, what they're telling you they're going to do.
And if I could...
Shoot the ducks.
Yeah. Mr. Councilman or Chair, if I could. The condition is that it is rezoned industrial only for this company, for this purpose. If they go out of business and change, it goes back to the beginning.
Well, we can't do that, so we would have to come up with a better, we're going to find out on another item tonight that that condition's not going to work, so that's all the more reason to make sure we massage it and get some...
Goes back to rehearing. Any other comments, Mr. Johnson?
I guess this is a question for staff and I'm scrolling back to it. When I looked through the statements from the staff, it says, "The uses allowed by the ID zoning district are not appropriate with the area. The ID district allows heavy manufacturing uses that may have negative effects on the existing residential uses located nearby. Even with the proposed restrictive covenants, this use is not appropriate in the areas." That's still staff's view.
Yes, because once you allow this use, it isn't allowed use, unless there's a condition that limits truck traffic or noxious smells or something to that effect, they can operate their business.
Are y'all still concerned that this is going to create spot zoning?
Yes, because there's no ID around this area.
Thank you.
Any further comments? Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye. Oppose no?
No.
Next item. Consider first reading and public hearing, but this, the applicant's asked for this to be deferred. This has already been advertised as a public hearing, so I want to allow the public hearing. And then at the end of that, with this being my district, I'd ask somebody to make a motion to defer it. Case number fifteen fourteen, rezoned property from RC one in BD one to BD three with conditions intersection Salines and Hilltop and Country Court in the Rock Hill community. Anybody here want to speak in favor? Speak in favor. Anybody opposed?
Move to close.
Got a motion to close, do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, can we have a new motion?
Motion to defer.
Second.
Discussion, question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, next item. Consider first reading and public hearing, case number fifteen fifteen, rezoned property from RD two to RUD at fifty eighteen Windmill Lane in the Lake Wiley community. Anybody here want to speak? Bear with me a minute while I flip a page. Speak in favor? Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, members of county council, Jonathan Yates, one oh five Broad Street, Charleston, South Carolina.
Yes, sir.
Here tonight on behalf of Mr. Randall Fields, the property owner, who's with me also.
Okay.
And he's going to speak shortly after me. To put this in context, Mr. Fields, his father and his uncle bought about eighty acres out that way in nineteen fifty-five. The family has owned the property since then. In nineteen sixty-eight, the original eighty acre tract was divvied up among family members. Mr. Fields has lived out there since nineteen fifty-five. From fifty-five to seventy-five, his family operated the convenience store right, and if you don't know, Windmill Lane is a little gravel road right off of Pole Branch Road, right on one side of the Carolina Cove subdivision. And what Randy is requesting tonight is a rezoning from RD two to RUD. On the surface, and I want to take this opportunity, we very much want to thank Mr. Steve Allen and Diane Dill of your staff to help us get the whole way here tonight, answer some good questions, and help us get the process going, and we appreciate their help. He is presently RD two. The property is seven and a half acres. This is where his mother's house was. He presently has a house on the property. He has a garage workshop, and of all things, a windmill. Not many houses in Clover have a windmill, but Randy has a windmill. The RD two would allow him to put in one unit per seventy-five hundred square feet. He wants to go to RUD, which would limit that from one unit to one acre. So in effect, it's a downzoning, and we feel that's why staff recommended approval, as did the planning commission by unanimous vote. Why we're seeking this approval is we would like next, if county council deems it appropriate to go in this place from RD two to RUD, and also, we have contiguous RUD in the Carolina Cove subdivision, so it's not a spot zoning. People would question Randy, why in the heck do you want to downzone your property, which he effectively is? What we'd like to do, if approved by this council, Randy would like to then apply to the Board of Zoning Appeals later in the year for a public service use of a communications facility. He cannot do that under RD two. He understands that by downzoning to RUD, he has not an approved communication facility, but simply the chance to go, excuse me, for a special exception approval before the BZA. The purpose of this request is that T-Mobile USA is very, has a very big coverage deficit in the area for both voice and advanced wireless. They've studied this coverage deficit for some time in Clover. They looked at Randy's property as the perfect solution. It had a good perimeter tree cover, it had seven and a half acres, and it had one problem. It wasn't zoned correctly. So that is the request for the rezoning. We will next go, if approved, to the Boarding and Zoning Appeals. I know there are some folks here tonight that might have some questions about the proposed facility. What we're proposing at this point is not a typical communication facility, it's what we call the monopine. It's a pine tree, it's designed to look like a pine tree, and then T-Mobile and three of their competitors will be allowed to put their equipment on it. In addition, this is not a typical facility. The typical facility that you drive around is either the big, what we call the guide tower with the guy wires, a lattice-style tower which is three-sided steel, or a monopole, which is just like a big pylon with equipment hanging on it. On this particular facility, and we're proposing, and this can all change before we go to BZA, we want to first get the zoning in place and then work with the neighbors, and we understand there's some neighbors here tonight with some concerns. We want to work with them. If we are able to rezone, we want to sit down with them, present our plans of the monopine, present the fact that we're not doing the big guide tower, we're not doing the big lattice, and also present one of the most important facts, that we're only proposing a hundred and seventy feet. That is very important. In the United States, physical communication facilities two hundred feet and above require air navigation lighting. This will not have any lights on it, it will appear to be just a tree.
Is it just like the one on four eighty-five?
No, we're doing a little, we're hoping to make it a little better than that, that was not. When the trees first came out, Chairman Blackwell, I joked about them, and I called them a toilet brush, and pardon my language, but that's what they look like. We're doing a better job with them now, getting the foliage looks better, trying to, you know, angle the foliage down so it does look like a tree. Randy's property, if approved in zoning, has that ability. We typically look for bigger properties. And the goal of T-Mobile and their competitors, and it's designed for all four major competitors in this market, T-Mobile initially wanted. I've been in the wireless business now for about twenty-one years. When I started, my work was leaving Charleston, going up I twenty-six, going up I seventy-seven, going up I twenty, first hitting the highways. Then I was assigned to go work in the major commercial areas, bringing the facilities where people work and shop. We're now in the final frontier, or the last frontier of our industry, where we have to improve what we call in-building residential coverage. In South Carolina today, we're seeing that close to, I think it's forty percent of all households are now wireless only. I do not have the statistics with me from York County, but in my home county of Charleston, eighty-four percent of all nine-one-one calls start from a wireless device. Wireless has become, from going from a businessman's toy, a rich man's toy, to a way of life for all of us. In this process, we've covered the roadways, we've covered the central business districts. The next goal is to get it into residential, where we can have folks, they don't have to go out in their yard to use a phone or jump up in a tree, they can use it throughout their home for all their devices. That's why Randy's property, except for the zoning issue, appealed to us because it was right where T-Mobile wanted to be. And in a residential area like that, to have a seven and a half acre parcel with good perimeter tree cover, a family that has a history since nineteen fifty-five in the property, and as a kicker, Randy agreed that if we get to put the tree up, the windmill comes down. So we're offering a trade-off. Nothing against your dad's windmill, but it's not the best-looking windmill in the world. And we're offering that trade-off. I know there are going to be some folks, they're going to talk after me, and we're going to get to meet with them and spend a lot of time, because again, this is just the first step in the process. Randy has to first downzone his property, where it'll have a lesser density, and his staff said probably generate lesser, the potential to generate lesser traffic. Then Randy has to start the whole site development process with York County, go through zoning, and eventually the decision on whether or not a monopine, or maybe we, after working with the neighbors, we come up with a better mousetrap. That decision goes to Board of Zoning Appeals, they will decide whether or not it's acceptable for that property. All we're really asking tonight is you give Randy the chance to ask the BZA whether it's appropriate, and allow us to work with the neighbors to see if we can come up with something that will work for them. Allow the coverage into the area, allow the ability to access nine-one-one first responders, but again, to utilize a property, seven and a half acres, very good perimeter tree cover, that would be really the best place to try to place this to cover that general area. I'm sorry, I got a little off track. This is just a straight rezoning, but I would have been disingenuous if I had not outlined clearly the purpose for this rezoning, and to say this is the first step of a very long process that eventually will end up before the county's quasi-judicial board to determine if in fact we are right that Randy's property is appropriate or not. And I think Mr. Fields wanted to say a few words as the property owner. He also, we were hoping that this would be a smooth process, it sometimes is, it sometimes isn't. He had a bunch of folks that could not be here tonight, some of his other neighbors, and he was able to get letters from all of them. All but one of his neighbors is supporting this request, Mr. Randy Fields.
Okay.
Good afternoon, my name is Randy Fields. I live at fifty fourteen Windmill Lane, which is on adjoining property to the seven and a half acres we're looking at. All this originally started in the fifties with eighty-something acres, and over the year, dependents have moved in, and we've had to split it off. As you know, you have to have an acre per house. So what we have here, I have letters from, there's seven houses on that road. I live on it, my son, who's in the back room, lives on it, and I have letters from four of the other six residents. One I have from Scott Sheets, who's been on at fifty fourteen since a year and a half ago, have a letter stating, if you'd like for me to read, and they all say basically the same thing, that they approve my rezoning efforts. Danny and Ashley Shealy, live at fifty twenty-five Windmill Lane, they've been there four years. Scott and Tracy Hovis live at fifty ninety-eight, which is on the other side, and they've been there for about three, three or four years. Alan and Barbara Michaels live actually at fifty forty-three, which the tree would more or less be between my house and theirs, in their front yard and in my backyard. I have a letter from them, they've been there nine years. This is my mother's house, ran it in two thousand and six. I have a letter from a neighbor that owns some adjoining, adjoining, adjoining property two lots over, he signed it, he's willing to go with it too. Because everybody says if this tree goes in, it's going to be back in a wooded area, so it's not really, the base is not really visible from anywhere. It's only going to do like a sixty by sixty square foot triangle, this can be fenced in and well-maintained. So I'd appreciate any help y'all can give us. I think it would be actually good for our community to have the service. Some of the neighbors that I've talked with that don't actually live there, would have access to the tower, so they'd be glad to be able to talk on their phone without having to go outside. So we appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Appreciate it. Anybody else want to speak in favor?
My name's Alan Fields, I live at fifty fifty-one, I'm his smallest son, but I was raised there, I plan on being there another thirty, forty years. What really gets me is, we've been there, I don't know if any of y'all travel towards Gastonia, Belmont, but when you're going down Pole Branch, you don't have signal half the time. Peak of the hill, you got a signal, and you lose calls all the way. Y'all know how aggravating it can be on your Bluetooth, driving down the road, writing a conversation, bleep. This would solve a lot of that problems. It just, it gives everybody more reception with their phones, their tablets. I have to go outside of my house and, to get reception, I have to walk out to the top of the dirt road there. My house will be, me and Alan Michaels will be the ones that are looking at the tree. Don't bother me a bit, it's a tree. At least it's not a big ugly tower going up. People move down here from up north and expect to change things that you ain't been here in no time, you know? We're trying to do better for our community because we are the community. We've been here our whole lifetime. We ain't going nowhere, and we plan on staying here regardless of what happens. So I'm thinking for the futures to come, all the kids running around now with cellphones, mom and daddy can't get a hold of them, it's right by the lake, it fixes the dead spots on the lake. So in all, in all, I think it'll be a better safety thing, but it's got to work for everybody. But like I said, you know, me and another guy is the ones that's actually going to be seeing the tree. Most everybody else will see it, oh, a second or two as you drive up and around or drive by, but if you don't live on that road, you're not going to see it. Thank you for y'all's time.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Anybody else in favor? Anybody opposed? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Heiburger. I lived in York County for four years through work, ended up moving to New England for a while, recently got back to York County and was very excited to be back in the area. But my husband and I recently purchased a foreclosed home on fifty one oh eight Windmill Drive. And our concern is, we're renovating this home, we've invested a lot of money in the renovations, and we found out that the parcel beside of our home is where the cell tower is targeted, and that's a concern for us. And I have some facts and figures to go over with you. So first of all, the Appraisal Journal, the National Association of Realtors, and the National Institute of Science, Law, and Public Policy have done studies showing that property values near cell towers can be impacted negatively by ten to twenty percent. So that means that I'm going to lose equity in my home that I've been investing in, okay? There are forty homes within a thousand feet of this proposed tower that could be negatively impacted in their real estate values. This is going to affect your tax base on those homes. This is a concern. And also, as far as that goes, there's also issues with the health and radiation, and there's concerns about, around those impacts. And those affect your property values, then the aesthetics of having the tower in your yard, and the fact that it can block your view. The current tower is proposed to be a hundred and seventy feet tall. I got on the company's website, who's going to install this tower, they don't say that it's going to be a monopine. Right now, it's listed as being a monopine or a monopole, okay? So that's a little disconnect in the data presented tonight. Also, if you look at that property, the highest point on that property is actually closer to my home. Once that gets rezoned, is there a chance that that tower could end up being basically in my backyard? That's a concern and an issue, okay? As I mentioned, you know, if I'd have known it was a cellphone tower going to go in that land, I wouldn't have purchased there. You know, I called and talked to realtors and different people, and everybody tells me it's going to hurt my land value. On the health side of things, the American Cancer Society has commented the potential health risks to RF exposure are largely unknown. This is because there's been very few human studies which have focused specifically on cellphone towers and cancer risk. Unfortunately, there's a public perception that cellphone towers cause health issues, okay? Perception is reality when you're trying to sell your home. In addition to our concerns around the cell tower, rezoning this property will allow it to be opened up to have other type of business activities occur there. Do not know if that's going to be something that's going to happen in the future, but that is another thing that can affect my property values as well as my quality of life in that area. So those are my concerns. Thank you for paying attention.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else opposed? Have a motion to close public hearing?
Move to close.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, do we have a new motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, based on the concerns of both parties here, and I want to reiterate the fact of the three reading system, and then you have your ZBA and so forth, and what Councilman Williams had mentioned before, that it's very important at times that government moves very slow. And so this is definitely so slow that it might be going backwards at times. So I feel like that it is an issue out there with the reception. Now, where this ends up, I don't know for sure, but just for the sake of being, given Now, where this ends up, I don't know for sure, but just for the sake of giving the benefit of the doubt of the property owner, at this point, I will move forward or recommend that we move forward at least once. And again, you got your whole process here to go through. So this thing could have some other things to it, to where it can settle your concerns otherwise that may be concerned about this, and I like the idea of it being completely covered as well, because I despise that one off of 485. But I would like to move it forward at least once at this point.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Roddy.
I have a question. I know it was presented that the housing density would come down with the reduction. I guess being one house per acre now, is that going to be the restriction? So this rezoning is basically built around providing less density, but it also opens up for this tower to go in.
That's the foundation of the motion. Yeah, that's the foundation of the rezoning.
And it was also mentioned by one of the people who were objecting that it opens up to more business coming in. Are businesses allowed in RUD? Because I thought this was...
I don't think it's wide open for anything, but that's what I was meaning. I'm open to the idea that, you know, this thing can be modified in a number of ways before we get to the end of the process.
Additional additions, but...
Yeah. Because somebody presented that, you know, it opens up for more business to come in, but what is the, what is that?
The RUD is one of our lesser intense zonings. Currently at RD2, apartments, townhomes, condominiums could come in, so this is definitely a downzoning from what it currently would be allowed.
Okay, because it got my attention when someone said it opens up to business, but I didn't think, you know, business could come in to that area.
No.
Okay. Good.
Is that it, gentlemen and ladies? Question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Next item. Consider first reading in public hearing case number 1517, rezoned property from RC1 to BD1 at 1480 Tom Hall Street, Highway 160 East and Fort Mill. Anybody here want to speak in favor? In favor? Anybody opposed? Got a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Do we have a new motion?
Move to approve first reading. Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Next item. Consider first reading, public hearing case number 1518, rezoned property from RUD to BD2 at 3039 and 3041 Hansmill Highway in New York Community. Anybody here want to speak in favor?
My name's Steve McGurk. I'm a resident at 6922 Pine Moss Lane, Clover. I'd like to thank all of you for the opportunity to propose a rezoning for the property at 3039 for a business office. The, at the last meeting, the staff recommended denial based on the following. It said that it was not consistent with the character of the community. Rezoning, said rezoning was premature, given to the lack of commercial and other development activity in the area. Rezoning request, it said, was not consistent with the comprehensive plan recommended land use designation of residential. After fairly extensive research as to the other things that were going on in the area... Can I pass these out?
Yeah, she's already passed them out.
Oh, you did. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay. I thought she left me. The first one is, we all know Hansmill Highway is a five lane highway. The South Carolina DOT traffic count, the most recent that we could find was 2013, and I'm sure it's much higher today. State there was 10,100 cars a day that passed by the front of this property. The, after research, we found that there were four other businesses within very close Concord Cove Restaurant within four tenths of a mile. A&amp;K Rebuilders, which is an automobile repair shop, within eight tenths mile. True Craft Welding within nine tenths of a mile. Lake Wile Euro, which was an automobile repair, within 1.9 tenths of a mile. The current zoning for the surrounding property, there's PD, there's ID, there's BD3, that's very close proximity of the same property. The, just from my observation, there's a lot of residential there, but I can't see any residential that's been built in years directly on Highway 274. There are a lot of neighborhoods that are built off of 274. The three homes that were directly across the street from us, from this property, have been raised very recently. The four commercial tracks that are within about a mile, we have within one tenth, 2974 is currently zoned industrial. Within three tenths of a mile, there's a large tract owned by Crescent that is BD3, and their advertisement, they advertise as excellent commercial tract in a growing commercial area. I know that's just their sales lingo, but that's their opinion of it. We're three tenths a mile from Dahler Boulevard, which is a 396 acre parcel that's currently zoned planned development, permitting office, commercial, residential. We're 1.1 miles from 5725 Camel Road, which is at the corner of Hansmill Highway, which is currently zoned industrial also. The, and you have the ad there from Crescent. And the Dahler property, the chip sting was kind of interesting, the thing that was on the internet, where the, I guess you guys are all familiar with it surely, where they kind of asked the public what they wanted in their area. We pulled that up, and most of it was retail and business that they were asking for in that area. We appreciate your consideration, and I thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak in favor? Anybody opposed? Have a motion to close?
Move to close.
Do we have a discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Do we have a new motion?
Again, for the benefit, sake of benefit of the doubt for the property owner, I want to move this forward on one reading, please.
Need a second.
Second for discussion.
Discussion. Yes, sir. Mr. Roddy.
I wanted to ask our staff about a few of the notes. You know, it was presented to us how close proximity other businesses are located to this property. How do we, how do we view what's going on one tenth of a mile, three tenths of a mile, a mile up the road to, for this not to fit the character of what's going on around it?
When staff looked at this, we had just come off our public meetings for the ordinance revisions, and one of the questions that consistently came up was, how do we, how did 49 grow like 49 did? Why did you let that happen? How did Cherry Root grow like it did? How did 161 grow like it did? So when staff looked at this, we do not see the commercial sort of spreading out at this point, and we decided we thought it was premature at this point, even though we understand there's some commercial there. It hasn't spread up and down 274 at this point. We have our existing comp plan that we looked at, and that's not the vision for this area. So that's why we made the recommendation that we did.
Mr. Williams.
That would be, assuming it goes forward, that would be the questions that, I mean, I could see that basically what you just said is reason for denial, is wants to maintain that transportation corridor as the traffic moves. But it does have an interesting point. If residents are not going to, if the properties, if it's hard to get residential on these corridors, what are we going to do with them? So those are, I mean, the staff probably doesn't know that either, but I imagine some other communities have looked at it. But those would be two things that I would look at going forward, because I, we definitely, the reason you get back and forth to Rock Hill in York so far now is because we haven't, we haven't put commercial developments every two tenths of a mile. And if you do that, then you end up with 49, just like you said.
Ms. Cox.
Aldra, do you know, I couldn't tell on the packet my red through, who the, I know that staff had denial, but planning commission was five to two. Who the two no votes were from, what districts?
I believe it was Ms., Jamie, I can always remember her first name. I'm sorry, I forgot her last name, and Ms. Miller, but I think Steve's here, is that right? Yeah, it was those two.
Did.
Sorry, stand corrected. Do you remember who it was? All right.
Yeah, let me clarify some confusion. Is this not the one you told me pre-meeting that the staff approved it?
No, that's the next one on the...
That's the next one, I think. Any other comments, questions?
I wasn't expecting any.
Question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next item. Consider first reading in public hearing of case number 1509, rezoned property from RUD to RC1 with conditions at 457 Highway 274 in the Lake Wile Community. Anybody here want to speak in favor?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen of council, my name is Steve McCray. I live at 2 Kings Mountain Street in York, South Carolina. I'm a partner of K&amp;L Gates. My office is located at 140 East Main Street in Rock Hill. I am the applicant of this zoning application by virtue of my firms representing the three co-tenant owners. Mr. Bailey Patrick, who is the managing member of Patrick Family LLC is here and will be speaking in favor of this rezoning. After I am, Mr. Tom Miller, who is the principal of one of the other three co-tenants, Milco LLC, is here tonight. He will not be speaking. Of course, he asked me to confirm his support of this rezoning. I personally want to thank Councilman Henderson and planning staff for their willingness to listen to us and about our proposed development plan, and for their suggestions on how we can make this plan more compatible with the county's probable changes to the long-range comprehensive plan for this area of York County. I have put on the screen the latest draft of the rezoning plan. This rezoning plan is very different from the one that is in the agenda in the following respects. Please note that this is a tract of 178.8 acres. The rezoning plan calls for 41 acres or 23% of the acreage to remain open space. The report from staff in the agenda states that the open space would be 35.8 acres more or less, or 20% of the site area. That's the minimum. So we are exceeding the minimum by a good bit. We are acutely aware of the concerns that residents of the Lake Wile area have about water quality of the lake and its streams and creeks. And for that reason, we have designed seven different water installations, water quality installations, that are spread throughout the project. In addition, our plan calls for 100 feet buffers along Mill Pond Creek and 50 feet of buffers along the several streams, greatly exceeding the current, okay? Okay? Greatly exceeding the current development standards, and maybe even anticipating new standards you might enact later in the year. Want to point out also, thank you. All right, thank you. Yeah. Here's one. There's one. There's one. There's seven of them. And the open space does not include the area that is covered by these water quality installations. In addition, concerning lots that will be on the shoreline of Lake Wile, those lots will have a minimum depth of 140 feet and will have a minimum wet width of 80 feet. Addressing concerns about traffic of the residents in the area from Bethel Road up to Highway 274 and other residents of the Lake Wile area, we have limited the number of houses to 250 on 125 developable acres out of a total of 178.8 acres in the project. Now, in your agenda package, it states that the number of homes would be 328. Since this agenda was published, we have reduced that maximum to 250. We believe that you are considering adopting as a new development standard for this area and other fast-growing areas of York County, the concept of, quote, "net density," unquote. In our project, 250 homes on 125 developable acres translate to a net density, I can't, won't be able to see it, to a net density of 2.0. Contrast that with the conventional planning concept of gross density, and the maximum gross density would be 1.4, which just sounds great. But I think you're right to start looking at net density. And I think that we are meeting an admirable goal in that regard, which certainly will have an impact on reducing traffic in the area, and in particular, reducing the level of service on that big intersection, which is hundreds of yards away from this project at Highway 4955 and 274. And I believe that was the primary reason that staff initially recommended denial of our application. Ms. Aldra Miller said that she would report that that recommendation has been changed.
Mr. McCray is correct. When we first reviewed this application, this was the exact type of development that council and the public has expressed concern about, that we had a regional slash background traffic problem that would not, was not on a improvement plan. That would be the intersection of 49, 274, and 557. We sat down, therefore, with the applicant, discussed the concerns about how do we address that situation, and they have agreed to enter into a development agreement where they would pay their proportionate share to the impact to that intersection. So at this time, with that condition, we would change our recommendation to approval.
I point out that the, that particular issue was not asked to be addressed in the TIA. We are meeting all of the issues that were raised in the TIA, and we are happy to make that commitment in a development agreement with a term of five years, which will come before you first reading in two weeks. We will make that commitment and contribute it at a particular time when it is contributed, even after the expiration of the development agreement. You will have it until such time as staff recommends that it be returned. For example, if there are no improvements within like 10 years to that intersection. I can't imagine you'll wait that long to do something there. But we're going to contribute our share, proportionate share. Finally, I want to point out that our plan provides for strict architectural standards. The minimum enclosed dwelling area for one story home would be 2,000 square feet. For two stories would be 2,400 square feet. Not gargantuan, but large enough for the targeted owners that this development will be constructed for. I also want to point out that there will be no vinyl siding allowed as a construction material. We hope that you agree with us that our... We hope that you agree with us that our development plan is unusually sensitive as to its environmental impact compared to other residential development projects you might have reviewed in the recent past, and as to addressing traffic concerns by our contribution to the cost of future improvements to that big intersection, as well as setting a maximum net density at 2.0. Thus, we think our rezoning plan could set a good precedent for other future similar projects, and I emphasize similar, in the Lake Wylee area. We thank you for your time and consideration of our development plan.
Thanks, sir. Anybody else, yes, sir?
Yes, sir. Good evening. My name is Bailey Patrick. I live at 255 Cherokee Road in Charlotte, North Carolina. I am the managing partner of Patrick Family LLC, and we are one of three co-tenants that own this property that is up for first reading tonight. I appreciate Steve McCray's comments. I don't want to be too long, and I don't want to repeat too much. There are a few things that I would like to reiterate. First of all, it has been a pleasure to work with the planning staff, and I appreciate this process, I think yields its best results when we can communicate openly and come to the table with a desire to potentially explore compromises and solutions, and I feel like we've done that in good faith. And certainly Councilman Henderson has been very helpful as well in guiding us in a direction that ultimately will yield a proposal that hopefully the community will feel much better about. My family and our two partners have owned this property for over 10 years, paid taxes for that time period. I am also a managing partner with Mayor Phil Patrick and Vermillion, or MPV Properties. We have been active developers and owners in York County for many years, and certainly have enjoyed that and plan to continue that. A little history on this property, we purchased it from Crescent Resources over 10 years ago. At the time, there was a pump station. We were under the impression we had 400 units allocated for our property in that pump station. We were familiar with the long-range plan that called for low-density residential on this property, which at two to three units, or two and a half units as an estimate, that would be 445 units. When we put this plan together, we've heard the concerns about traffic, we've heard concerns about impact on schools, on water quality. That is what led us to come in with a much lower request of 328 units. Clearly, it was not low enough, and we've heard that message, and we have responded with significant changes. The reduction to 250 units at two units per developable acre, 1.4 per gross acre, in my view and experience, that is a very low density. And I hope that you will agree with that and recognize that. We also have tried to respond to concerns about traffic and committed dollars to help alleviate those issues. We are concerned about the water quality, and that is why we doubled the buffers on the shoreline from 50 to 100 feet, 80 feet along the creeks, and planned for seven water-quality ponds. We want a high-quality development, that's why we are showing attractive amenities. We're making commitments on building materials. And I think we would love to do something that alleviates some of the concerns on school impact. And with this type density, honestly, it's not as much as we would like, but it's enough where hopefully we can deliver some smaller lots that are geared towards that active adult, empty nester. They don't want to take care of a big yard, and therefore, they don't have children at home, and they wouldn't impact the schools as much as if we have a lower-density deal with bigger houses and a lot of children. So that certainly is a strategy of ours to go after that active adult market that is more retiree. We also candidly do not have a builder at this time. We do not have a development start date at this time. We want to get the entitlements in place so when the time is right, we can begin the project. But we're cognizant of the pennies-for-progress five-lane water, I mean, road project that's going to happen right in front of our site. That's disruptive. We want that to get designed. We want to have the plans underway, and we will address those accordingly in our planning and in our delayed phasing of the project. So for those reasons, mainly, we feel like we have heard the concerns, we've responded to them, and we feel like we have a win-win here that is a good project for the community. It can work for us, and I really appreciate your consideration of approval for it.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it. Anybody else in favor? Anybody opposed? Hello?
Eric Carpenter, 2310 Brent Hill Lane, Lake Wylee. My opposition to this request stems from the impact that the development will have on the intersection at 49, Highway 57, and Highway 274. As planning staff acknowledged in their notes, that intersection currently provides a level of service currently below acceptable standards. It should be noted that there's a development of 800 homes going in approximately three miles away. It's in North Carolina, out of the scope of this council, but the impact of that traffic needs to be considered on the intersection. This development would have additional impact on that level of service. I live in the Lending neighborhood, which is adjoining that intersection. Traffic can enter our neighborhood on Lending Point Drive off of 274 and exit off of Mill Pond Road onto Highway 49, thus avoiding this intersection. As that level of service continues to deteriorate, we'll see increased cut-through traffic through the landing. So again, I would encourage you to vote against this request, just because of the impact on the intersection at Highway 49, 274, and 557. While we appreciate the developers have offered to contribute their portion of the expense, I confirm with planning staff today, there are no plans to improve this intersection at this time. So while that's a generous offer, that's not going to solve our problem. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next person opposed? Yes, ma'am.
All right. Hi there. Hadn't planned on speaking tonight, but I think the more the merrier in this game, Mr. Henderson. I'm Mary Williams. I'm at 313 Squirrel Lane in Lake Wylee. I'm treasurer of our homeowners association for the Oakton subdivision. Are you familiar with the Oakton subdivision, Mr. Henderson, in your district? Yes? Okay. So we're right off of Montgomery Road where the Rainbow Inn used to be, and now it's a boat sales company. And we are very concerned, I'm here representing my entire subdivision, as far as the amount of traffic that we're already seeing on Highway 49. There's additional subdivisions going in, being built right on our road on Montgomery. There's other ones, as you go down 274, you see lots of other subdivisions going that it's going to put strain on that corner. I was going to applaud the staff for denying this initially, but I'm going to take that back now, I guess. There is just, we came to Lake Wylee because it's a wonderful rural community. We belong to the River Hills Country Club. We also have our boat docked at the Commodore Yacht Club. We live and breathe in Lake Wylee. We've seen the growth, we've seen the loaves, we've seen the Home Depot come. We're looking forward to Publix replacing Bylow. But at some point, somebody's got to look at the totality of what's happening to our wonderful rural Lake Wylee. Every day, I come home from work from Charlotte, and I come across the Buster Boyd Bridge, and I just go, I go from 55 miles an hour to 35 miles an hour, because that's the speed limit on the Buster Boyd Bridge, and it makes me know that my life can now slow down. So, and actually, if we can, can we put the picture up there that was up there from the That's what I come home to. That's what I want to keep coming home to. The traffic is getting outrageously ridiculous. It takes me 10 to 15 minutes just to get out of my street in the mornings at rush hour. And even then, I have to get into the suicide lane, which I hate to do. But it takes me 10 to 15 minutes already. How are you going to get the people that are in this new proposed development across the Buster Boyd Bridge? So it's not just that little triangle area, or big triangle area, they got to get up to Charlotte, too. And they've got to get up going out past Belmont. And that's a little tiny windy road. And you know what? We just, the planning is not happening. And I kind of, are the Planning Commission here, is that, who's the Planning Commission that you reported to?
She's the director. Oh, Planning Commission, I'm sorry. They're not here.
Yeah, they're not here tonight. And you know what? They really should be here, to hear our concerns, and to see what they're doing to our district, too, Mr. Henderson. It's growing out of control and too fast. And there is no way in heck that I would think that the developers are going to put their money into that intersection ahead of time. I think that they would, they would start developing and put the cart before the horse, and then say, yeah, 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 now that we got the developing going on, we've got all of this machinery going up and down that area as well. And I just don't, I would really want to see, fix that intersection first, and then we can talk about the development. And also, you got to talk about the Buster Boyd Bridge. Right? So the rezoning, the RUD rezoning was put in place for a reason. It was to protect just against this type of egregious growth. And now they want to change the rules. And that's just not right. That's why that property was zoned RUD to begin with. Keep it there. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else opposed? I won't forget about you.
Don Tongson, 324 Bonham Road in Lake Wylee. I do want to thank the planning staff and council for what you have done on the comprehensive plan. I do hope that that goes through in August, and I hope that it makes a change for the better. This subdivision, the density is still too high. They do have some good things in place that are, seem to be in line with the comprehensive The back of Mill Creek is already developed on one side completely. Mill Creek is a bird sanctuary. It's got a huge wetland in the back of it. It's already suffered a lot of sedimentation, which is bad. If we put 250 more houses there, and there's a lot more room to put houses on that side within York County. But I also am very, very concerned with the 800-plus going in on the stow botanical land that they sold, McLean Homes. That's a lot more traffic that's going to come straight through Lake Wylee that we're going to have to compete with, because they don't have another way to get to Charlotte directly. It's too close to Lake Wylee. And so that's their most direct route, and that's the route that they're going to take. So the traffic continues to be the water resources and the infrastructure. Those are the two biggest concerns I think that everybody has. And the lack of infrastructure, I can't even imagine, when the 450 apartments go in on that other cor, on that corner of 557, and 274, and 49, right across, that's, I don't even know how they're going to get onto the road, because they're almost right at that intersection. I can't even imagine. Is there going to be a stoplight and then a stoplight 100 feet back? I don't even know how they're going to get out. I don't know what the plan is. I don't know if there's any plans to, not that I know of, to widen Buster Boyd Bridge, to build another bridge across the river. It's a parking lot twice a day. It's a parking lot on the way to work, it's a parking lot on the way back. It's ridiculous. And I think, you know, I know that y'all have heard us, I know that you have, and this doesn't need to be rezoned for that level of density housing. It's, if it's more houses than one per buildable acre, then it's way too many, especially in that close proximity to the lake. It's too much. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, allow me to speak. My name is William Davis. I live on 413 Harper Davis Road that borders the property that is in question. The community is so overrun with cars and people right now, you've got to wait in line. Everywhere you go, just like if you went to the beach to eat, you've got to wait in line. You go to the grocery store, you've got to wait in line for people. This place has grown faster than it can handle more people. There are housing developments going up east, west, north, and south of there with hundreds of houses going in. In the near future, it's going to be impossible and unsafe for you to come through there. My son, my brothers, have all been on the fire department there, and the calls that has, you know, they stuff in the 300 or 400 calls that they had to go to right there in Lake Wylee every year. It's too dense, because like I say, I live right on the border of it. Gas company come in there recently, said they's going to run a pipeline right down beside the power line there, on the opposite side of my land. Well, for about two weeks, I was sick. I go down to the bottom of my land, our survey stop's going across my land. They said, oh, we're going to put a gas line across your land for this property. Not, didn't ask me, told me they's going to take my land. And I don't see how they can do that. People got their money, can come in there and run over little people. Think, if you lived there, I don't know if any of you gentlemen live in that area, you need to live there. Well, I moved there when I was 14, 15, and you, you know, that place don't even look like the same, community. My dad worked hard for that land. I'm not opposed to people coming in and being neighbors, but not so many. That's a wetland, wildlife areas, bird sanctuary, and my kids run through there all the time. My kids grew up in that swamp. My grandkids want to go around in there. They're not going to be everywhere. And, you know, just think about the impact that you putting on the people that's been there all their lives. You know, I can say that my house now is a Walmart, Lowe's. Used to be a kind of country around there, it's not no more. I'd like to keep it country. Yes, I'd like to build houses on my land, but the people I want on my land is my kids, my grandkids. And it's rooting us all out. So I thank you for your time and your decisions.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am?
We was at the doctors in Charlotte.
You look great.
But that was my husband, and I just want to reiterate, we have lived there ourselves for 40 years. We had a trailer there first, now we build a nice home. My home is worth $275,000, just my home alone, on the 1.666 acres I got. Then we got other land. But what my concerns are is, we don't have a fire department, we don't have a police department. We got a chamber of commerce, but we don't even have a courthouse or nothing, no urgent care center, nothing like that for the volume of people you got in that area now. And my son is a volunteer fire department. He's one on the, he's a lieutenant, as a matter of fact. And he, all his calls are mainly wrecks at the bridge, from the bridge to Highway 274, 49, 557, most of the calls are there. And a lot of those are wrecks that have a lot of death in them, or life-altering wrecks. Okay, it used to be a community of 50 farms. There's only one working farm now, but we're the small, little Davis farm that's getting squeezed, and our bubble's fixing to burst. Now, we don't mind growth, but first, take care of the infrastructure. Because the major metropolis around the Lake Wylee area, yes, you've got nice roads. But once you get past Mill Creek Bridge, there's potholes all the way to the state line. All right, you fixing to fix Polabridge Road, but are you going to do 274? 557 is the same way. Once you get past Pine Once you get past Pine Grove Church, well, what used to be Pine, potholes. And once you get past, where you go down 49 to go to York, potholes. What are we going to do about all that? Y'all would, it's tearing our vehicles up. And people are having to spend more money on vehicle repair, or, hey, I got one that's 13-years-old, I'm going to have to fix to buy me a new one. Simply because the roads are tearing my vehicle up. And I live on a dirt road. And I've lived on a dirt road for 40 years. Thank you for your time.
Yes, ma'am. Anybody else opposed? Yes, ma'am.
My name's Lynn Sherrill. I live on, at 4877 Harper Davis Road, next to the Davises there. Again, that land, and that beautiful land that's been there all this time, and the wetlands that are there, we go down every year with the river sweep, and we clean up the water and the edge. And it is a wetland, it's beautiful, it's, um, but it's not deep. It's not like it's going to be waterfront property for these people. It's, it's, it's two feet deep with merk all the way down to the bottom. We do live on a dirt road, and it's terrible, you know, but them developing over there isn't going to do anything out of gravel road. We've got bad roads all through Lake Wiley. I also own Lake Wiley Tax, I'm on Highway 49 across from Montgomery Road. And I watch the traffic every day at my office. I don't leave my office before 6 o'clock, because there's no reason to. You can't get out onto 49. The traffic is just growing. You guys have heard them speak about the 800 homes that are going in at South Seven Oaks, and that's all going to come right through Lake Wiley. There's also another development going on across from the Catholic Church, right there at 74 and 279 on Oak, River Oak Road. And that's going to bring in, I don't even know how many homes. So, to save this one piece would be wonderful. When they did the zoning thing a few years ago, and they said, "Put what you want in this spot," I was like, "Park, recreation, something that's going to keep the wildlife and preserve the area versus build more dang homes." Of course, behind my house, I've got Mill Creek Falls. And when I cleared my pasture for my animals, I have seven acres there. When I cleared my land, I left 75 to 100 feet of woods between me and what I knew was someone, was their other property. And of course, now those houses have moved in to Mill Creek Falls, and they, someone just recently built right down to, there's actually Mill Creek that runs behind us, and built right up to it. So in the wintertime, the leaves are down, I can see all the houses in that neighborhood now. When before, it was all woods, because they didn't keep that same buffer of tree line. I don't think we need another big development right there, especially in such a place that would be a much better place for a park, or a common area, or a walking park, or anything like that would be much nicer than another 250 houses. I appreciate they reduced the amount of homes, but do we really need any more right there? How are they going to come out? They'll be right at the intersection of 274 and, and 40, and Pole Branch. And you can't get through there now. How are they going to even get out of there? Thank you for my, thank you for your time.
Yes, ma'am. I thought I saw somebody else. Yes, sir.
I'm Jim Davis. I'm the heir to James Davis. The issue that I'd like to bring up, our brother-in-law bought most of it up as far as our roads. In our schools, we can't handle it. We pay these big taxes, and we can't handle them. We're youngins in that area, we just can't do it. Our roads won't do it. Shopping centers won't do it. But the main thing I want to say is, I take care of that farm. And I'm having a terrible problem right now with people coming over and, and shooting at my cows for guns. And I mean, I'm, I'm really getting to a tick state in my life. And, you know, I work hard out there. Belling hay, keep the feed going, just let my mama watch. Something's got to change. I was required to have one acre of land to build my house. My dad had to give me an acre of land. He had to give my brother, my other brother. We were required to do that. I got a nephew that just obtained a permit several months ago. What'd he get? He had to get an acre of land. Now you tell me that these people here have the right to go in and build 250 houses on 178 acres, which a lot of it's swamp. Now you tell me that. Are they better than we are? Our taxes paid here in York County? And we still live on a dirt road? And we promised in 2003 that we was going to get it paid. It ain't happened. None of it. Promises, promises, promises. And I'm not going to give up my livestock. I don't care how bad it gets. But today I find one dead. I might be in this field over here, because I am not going to put up with it. Adults, children of children, how to shoot animals, cows. I, I'm just not going to put up with it. And the next thing we're going to have, is we're going to be coming down here, because they're all going to be telling us that we've got to get rid of our animals. Because it poop, and it stink. Well, we got all kinds of animals on that farm, and we the last ones. And they ain't going nowhere. Nowhere. We eat them. That's our livelihood. You eat chicken? You eat hogs? You eat cows? And I don't even like cows to eat, but I raise them. But, you know, look at the impact it's coming on us. And I was born and raised down there. I mean, we've been there for 50-something years. And it's here, things you got on here, before you know it, he's going to make a road, it's going to come down our dirt road, and it'll get paid, and then the rest of them will be dirt again. Some are dirt at our house. Because it ain't got nothing to do with that. It's going to come right through Harper Davis Road, they'll find out a way to get through there. Harper Davis Road. At that curve, it'd be cut. There's already a logging road right through it. So, look at our point. We're required to have one acre of land. Why not them? That's all we ask. I don't mind the growth, but don't you think we ought to be a little equal on this, for people who was there first? Are you just trying to just squeeze us out? It's just a matter of time. You know, we're going to die. But the youngins is going to get the land. I'll probably come down here the next six months, get a permit for my daughter. But I'm going to have to have one acre of land for my daughter. Right? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Well, I need to follow that. That's strong. I've known the Davises all my life, and, uh...
Be sure to give your name and address.
No, I'm sorry. Perry Johnston. Live at 5001 Lake Miss Drive. See that one? Right there. Uh, I, I, I'm really hoping that you really, truly listen to what Mr. Davis just said. All of a sudden, someone comes in here, wants to change RUD to RC1. This is a third attempt at this. When I was on council, we turned it down. I think when Tom Smith was on council, they got turned down. You know, it's not the council's responsibility to assist a developer in making his numbers work. When you buy a piece of property, and it's zoned RUD, you bought that piece of property in the zoning that went with it. Don't come in here trying to tell everybody now that, like Mr. Davis says, he's got to do one acre. Now, always, what these folks trying to do is change something that they just came in and bought, knowingly. The Davises grew up with it. And they can't change. We, we don't need to help make their numbers work. They're grown people. They had that responsibility and knowledge when they purchased the property. The cove east of Mill Creek Bridge, uh, this little area right in here was six feet deep. The road widening of 274 from the intersection of 557, 49, the entrance to the landing and the two shopping centers up at the main intersection filled that in. It's now about three feet deep. On the other side of the bridge, it's less than a foot deep. I used to drive my boat under the bridge and back in the back. It's silted in that much. Mr. Davis mentioned about his cows and their pooping. Well, what he failed to mention was the housing development that's already in there behind this one, their sewer, all of it runs downhill. Where do you think the outfall of this new development is going to be put? On the shores of Mill Creek? Right down at the water's edge, just like they are in Tega Kay? Right? When it overflows, where does it go? Doesn't have to go far, does it? That one has already overflowed, in their backyard. I saw it. It was not pretty. Now, these folks are going to be adding more and more. They talk of putting two silt fences and these other amenities to slow down the siltation. Sounds good, doesn't work. I've got a jar at home, this, this area right behind me is now developed, or developing, and they've just now put in the roadway, or, they're, they're cutting the infrastructure in now. Last major rain event we had, I took a pint jar, one second, in the lake. It is now silted down, and it's got about a sixteenth of an inch of silt in the bottom of it. That came through five silt fences. Five. And it's just the roadway. You allow this kind of density to go in, it's not just roadway's getting cut, this'll be clear cut. With the exception of the gullies, that they're not going to be able to develop it, that they're going to save as open space. Saving it as open space because they can't develop it. Penance for progress was mentioned. I work three miles from home, blessed. Except now, whenever I get to the intersection of 49, 557, and get ready to get on 274, I'm bumper to bumper. I wait in track. Just like Highway 160. Same thing. The Penance for Progress originally started as a five-lane widening of 274 Pole Branch. It's now dropped to, to three. The gentleman earlier said five lanes, but I believe it's at three. True? Rick? Anybody?
I believe you're right.
Yeah. Uh, three's going to be too small. So therefore, we're going to widen that road, it's going to silt in the lake, it's going to happen. Then we're going to come back later on, widen it again, it's going to silt in the lake again. Mill Creek can't stand it. Please, really consider this, and vote with your, with your brain. I mean, it doesn't make sense to approve this. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Yes, yes, sir. I see another hand. Another hand.
My name is Lynn Davis. I live at 381...
Oh, boy, well, just keep going. I'm sorry, sir. Go ahead.
My name is Lynn Davis. I live at 381 Harper Davis Road. I live at the very end of it with my mom. And, uh, we've been down there since 1966. And that, this development, it, you know, I've been on the fire department 41 years, and I've seen a lot of our houses burned because they stacked up on top of each other. One burns, four of them are burning. I voted, I went to another meeting one time to, to see if Mill Creek Falls was behind us, they were going to do the same thing, we voted down, because they were going to stack the houses up. And this is awful. Just like Perry said about the sewer. Me and Perry both went down there to sewer line. That creek gets up nine foot sometimes when it rains hard. And all that sewer runs out of those lines into that creek. Me and Perry went down there one time, took pictures of it. And I just hope that y'all reconsider about this deal of these homes being built. I mean, I ain't got nothing wrong with them building an acre or two acres, but just stacking them up like that, that's not right. I thank you for your time.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. I'm Linda Cox. I live at 5390 Commodore Place in Lake Wiley. Been here about 40 years. And I'm, I'm the one that signed the sheet out there that I wasn't supposed to sign, and you call my name. I wasn't planning on talking, I just thought I was supposed to sign in, so I did what I thought I was supposed to do. Thanks for hearing our concerns, and I know y'all love the lake probably as much as we do, and the beauty of it, and the, the really neat place that we have down here. I, I think there's a couple of things I'd like to bring out that Mr. Patrick said. You know, I too believe that somebody ought to be able to use their land, and I know he bought that as an investment, but, you know, like Mr. Johnson said, the zoning was there, and he bought, you know, what he got was what he paid for. But, uh, one thing about it, he was saying that, you know, we don't have to worry too much about the impact on schools. 2,000 square-foot house, and 2,400 square-foot house, you can put a lot of schoolchildren in a house like that. So, you know, I, I don't necessarily think that's going to be the case. A lot of people in Lake Wiley like to, I mean, a lot of people in Charlotte like to live in Lake Wiley, and a smaller house like that would probably be just the thing, even though they've got three or four kids, it's plenty of room. Another thing I wanted to mention is, um, the, uh, the traffic, has everybody, has, everybody's so eloquently spoken about it, I, mine's going to be poor in comparison to theirs, but y'all all know the traffic at Lake Wiley, it's tremendous. We've got North Carolina on one side, so that's going to be a battle if we want to get the bridge, since it's a bridge that spans half North Carolina, half South Carolina, or third, what, fourth, what, have you? That's going to be a problem when we get ready to make that bridge wider. Maybe not wider, maybe have to make it higher. But that will be a problem that we'll face, because we're going to, South Carolina's going to have to deal with North Carolina on that, and they might not see it have the need like we do, since a good majority of people do work in Charlotte. So, we've got that, we've got the lake on one side, so you can't really do too much with that. So, we've got a couple strikes against us already with the traffic, so I do hope you folks will consider that. I'd love to see Mr. Pat, Mr. Patrick be able to develop his land, but perhaps he would help, you know, get our roads situated first, and once that's done, then, you know, we could go on, and, and he could develop his land. Looks like, uh, his properties are going to be, because of the fact that some of that land is too low to actually build on, his properties are going to be on less than a tenth of an acre, um, excuse me, less than a fourth of an acre. About 7,000 square feet, I think he said 140 by 60. Does that sound right? Something along there. So, that's about 7,000 square feet that, uh, the houses will be on. That is a pretty small lot. Like I said, it's less than a fourth of an acre, so we're getting probably towards a fifth of an acre, maybe even less than that. So, y'all all know a fifth of an acre is not very much. Water quality is a tremendous thing on Lake Wiley. And I, I don't know about, you know, it's nice to have those seven water checkpoints, but what I'm afraid will happen is, you know, I don't know any place else that has those, y'all may know that, know someplace that has those. I'm not sure, you know, how efficient that's going to be. Now, maybe that's something that looks good on paper, and it sounds good, but, you know, when it comes to efficiency, I don't know, I don't know if that's going to do very much. And when you start building 240 houses on a property like that, you're going to have the point source runoff right into the lake of, of all sorts of things. They put up the fences, and y'all know they put up these silt fences, but still, that's, you know, a lot of, a lot of things happen, those fences get run down by mud and so forth, and so, uh, that's, you know, that, a lot of that's going to go in the lake, and like Mr. Johnson said, that's going to, that one or two feet he's got left will dwindle to pretty much just mush. So, uh, I appreciate you hearing this, and I know you guys will think about what everybody's got to say, and, and make the right decision, and I thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, ma'am.
The next time I won't sign up for a [inaudible].
Yes, ma'am. I know there were other hands back there. Oh, yes. No? Yes, sir.
Hi. My name is Tom Frederick, and I live on Harper, excuse me, and I live on Harper Davis Road, which joins the north side there. which joins the north side there. I, I can't disagree with most of what's been said already against the development. It sounds like a really great development, but it's really not a good fit. The traffic, of course, and indeed, at this point, from the junction, the fork of seventy-three and seventy-four, the traffic backs up all the way to the stoplight from Walmart, which is not a good situation. And of course, there's going to be some improvement at, at the fork to the north, but that doesn't solve any problem, that just moves it a little further towards North Carolina, wherever the lanes drop down again. So that's the traffic. The fit, every lot on Harper Davis Road is two acres or bigger, most two, a few fours and fives and tens. We searched for nine months to find a property that we could park our own boat on our own property and be economical, and you can't do that in developments like this. Could I see that other mon- montage, please? I mean, this is what we're proud of, right? This is why we show these images to people outside and inside the community. I don't see any streets with house by house by house by house. I wonder why? I guess it's not that attractive. Of course, I'm a little worried about my property values. The silting, I didn't even, actually, I never even heard of this issue until two days ago, and I live adjacent, which I'm a little surprised about. I didn't learn about the silting until this gentleman gave us some background. For heaven's sakes, that whole branch of the lake is half-filled up in just his lifetime. The whole thing will be gone before I die. And last but not least, they knew, when they bought it, what the zoning was. Of course, like every corporation, they go, oh, well, we'll buy it, throw some money at it, see if we can get the zoning we want. Can't get it, we'll flip it, fine, but I still, the point is that they knew how it was zoned when they bought it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Ellen Goff, I live at nine-eight-one Bonham Road in Lake Wylie, and I have really nothing to add to all the, the people who've come before me to object to this, other than to say, once again, the residents of Lake Wylie are trying to impress upon this body how much we need relief from traffic and uncontrolled growth, and I, I just, I don't know how much pushback we can, we can bring, meeting after meeting. But I sincerely hope you will take to heart what you've heard tonight, because constantly and continually, we come to you saying, we need relief, we need a plan, and we need some help. And it feels like we just get a collective shrug. I don't know what it's going to take, but we're going to keep coming back till we get it, and I hope that you will turn this down. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Judy Payne, and I live at eight-seventy-five Bonham Road. Been down here forty-five years, I've talked to most of y'all, we've got a couple new ones. The planning staff has done an excellent job. The problem is, they're saying that all of York County, it has to be a comprehensive plan, but our area is a little bit different, even though Fort Mill's overloaded and Rock Hill's pretty busy. But our area doesn't have the ways out that the other areas do. So I would ask that the staff consider that when they're doing their planning, and I do thank you for your work, y'all worked hard. I thank the neighbors for coming. I thank the developers, for at least, coming down some, and I thank you guys. Everybody working together has done something, and they have done good, but it's not enough. So I'm asking the developers, the staff, the council, please go the next step and understand. It just doesn't work the way it is, and I appreciate y'all and the help that you're giving us.
Yes, ma'am. I don't see any more hands, I don't-
Move to close.
We've got a motion to close. Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those no, do we have a new motion?
Yes, I'd like to move based upon the overwhelming response, being opposed to this, to this level. I would make a recommendation that we deny zoning as proposed.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Yes.
Yes, sir. Mr. Henderson.
I want to make it clear that, being that we did not have the comprehensive land use and the potential zoning changes in place at this point, I did go out and did make it clear that what our goals were trying, what, what we were trying to get to, I argued, I, I made the case as strong as I could, I felt like that I was moving in the right direction, and apparently I was, but just like the last speaker stated, maybe it wasn't quite enough. And I'm very sympathetic toward the, well, all these concerns. But I, I just wanted you to know that I, I have really, really gone out of my way, being that I didn't have one single ordinance on my side, or our, our side, at, at least until August or so. But, you know, if, I've got to live with you folks, so therefore, that's, that's where I'll have to end it tonight.
Mr. Williams.
Yes, I'd just like to add on the previous two zones we approved. First reading, not necessarily sure whether we're going to approve second or third reading. Difference between this case is I don't, there's no conditions or anything that could fix any of your objections. And also, you're correct, y'all have been here several times communicating your needs to us, we have not, unfortunately, at this point, this is the first time we've had any tools where we could actually vote the way you want it. The point's well made that it was RUD when it was purchased, and I was afraid there was going to be a different motion made that I wasn't going to be able to support, but I, I will support this one.
Anybody else? Yes, sir, Mr. Ronnie?
Well, I wrote down probably forty questions while this was going on. You know, we, we oftentimes get people that come to us and ask us to support something one way because of this reason, or not support it because of other reasons, but overwhelmingly, the constant thing that we always hear is about is traffic, traffic, traffic. And we do have a traffic problem in York County, whether it's Fort Mill, Lake Wylie, Clover, Rock Hill's getting some areas that are being congested, and that falls back on us. Apparently, somewhere along the line, either it's with us or before us, and may even be still after us, we haven't done a good job of addressing these traffic issues in certain areas. You know, we, we lean on Pinage for Progress to do certain things, but that can only do so much. The state needs to step in and help us out, the county obviously can do a little better job, but we are playing catch-up, and from the sound of it, and the looks of it, the feel of it, we're ten years behind. We are ten years behind on traffic in these key areas of points of entry, exit, and mobility to move around York County. You know, you, you don't know all the things that go on before you get on council, you don't know all the things that's going on in Fort Mill, Rock Hill, Lake Wylie, until you had to deal with them. And I can honestly say, time and time again, traffic is the number one concern of every development that's going on, every building project that's going on, and we are behind at least, I think I'm being real generous in saying, ten years on traffic issues in this county. And until we are able to man up, woman up, fess up, and do something about it, it's only going to get worse. But I can assure you, we can't continue to say no to every development that's going to impact traffic, because people, when they see those pictures, they want to move here. That's why they want to move here. But unfortunately, we're, we're in a catch-twenty-two, we got people moving here, whether this council makes the right decision or the wrong decision, because when they go online, the internet, and they research York County and all its beautiful amenities, why not say, I want to be a part of this? But we have to do a better job of making sure we get prepared, ready for them to come. In traffic, in York County, Mecklenburg County, Iredale, all these other surrounding areas, it's getting worse, and it's going to take money to fix the problem. I mean, if we can pay for it with patience, we probably have it paid for, but that don't foot the bill. But people are coming to York County, whether this council makes the right decision or the wrong decision, because they see those pictures. They want to be a part of it, and we have something here that is so good and so great that people are coming from, people are coming from everywhere that wants to be a part of it. And I'm sure many of you weren't raised here, somehow moved here, whether it was a job, family, friends, something brought you here, and something's bringing the next wave. They're bringing them here. So we have to do a better job of addressing this traffic issue, because it's not going away, and it's not getting any cheaper, to widen roads, cut roads, we, we have, we've had some discussion on making sure we get some plans in place that preserve land from houses so that we can put roads, so we can have some relief points throughout this county. So, but we're playing catch-up, and, and I'm not afraid to say that we are behind, and whether it's on our shoulders, it's on our shoulders now, but some of our predecessors, they may not have gotten us in position to adequately accommodate some of the things that developers and even individuals that go out and buy a two, three, four, five acre tract. We're, we're trying to beat them to the point, trying to beat them to the punch to get this property, because we're trying to think, in the next five, ten years, we, we need to put a road through this particular area, we need to cut a road over here. So we're, we're aggressively battling this concern as to where are we going to need a road in the next ten years, because so many people are moving here. But one good thing about having a hotspot for where people want to move to, our property values are going up, it's, but it's a catch-twenty-two. You know, if everybody wants to be here, everybody's coming here, and we can't adequately accommodate them, that's the problem. So, it doesn't, it doesn't surprise me that we're starting to, to back up on some of these developments and, and, and hold off on them, but I can honestly say, when someone has a piece of property that wants to utilize it, now, I did, one of the questions I did want to have answered is, if we don't change the zoning on this property right now, what could that developer come in and propose to put on it that would have, if not the same traffic impact, or even greater? What could go there now that they won't have to come in and ask for?
They, by right, have a single family, one unit to the acre, is what they could develop.
Okay, and it, it seems like that's what the neighbors have pretty much expressed, you know, we've had to adhere by the, the one acre rule, the developer knew it was one acre when he purchased it, so you kind of have to respect the wishes of the, the surrounding neighbors that have, that have had to live by that same rule. You know, we, we would love to grow the tax base, but we have to be cognizant of what this development's going to bring on traffic, what it's going to bring on schools, what it's going to bring on police service, fire service, all that, all that goes into, to making this decision, and if everyone else around it has to adhere to the one acre rule, and the community has spoken up that they've had to live by it, then I certainly couldn't, couldn't lay myself to go to the contrary to support this development. So I, I'll jump on board with Mr. Henderson in, in not support it as well.
I believe, I-
One, one quick question. Just for, since I'm new at this, RUD is one per acre, but is that, is that buildable acre? Because we keep talking about densities and that type of thing, there's a difference between buildable acre, you know, and density.
At the present time, our standard is just one unit to the acre. We do not take into account buildable, non-buildable gross versus net, it's one unit to the acre.
It's actually, in the RUD district, it's one to two units per acre.
Okay, so they could do-
I apologize.
No, I'm sorry. No, it, um, what it accommodates is open space that goes along with the plemmer plaid. If it were RUD one, it'd be one unit per acre, but in RUD, it is one unit per two acres.
Oh, so it's one unit per two acres?
Two acres.
Gross.
Big difference.
Big difference.
Yeah. Like I said, it accommodates for open space that's required in the development.
Thanks for the clarification, Robert. A question on the motion, all those in favor?
Oh, I'm sorry, I raised my hand just a minute ago.
Okay.
I just wanted to be known that I want to personally thank the developer and everyone involved in with trying to work this out, and, and I appreciate everyone trying to get on board to, to reach, help us reach our goals and try, try to solve our problems. Thank you very much.
Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those no, next item. Bear with me a couple pages here. Consider third reading, well, I'll tell you what, let me hang on a second while people clear. Next item is to consider third reading of, of, third reading of an ordinance authorizing a lease to renew our community of a portion of county property located at White Street and Oakland Avenue, and containing approximately four, four-point-four-three acres of the former good automotive property, including the former showroom and body shop, to provide for a public hearing and to provide for other matters related thereto.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, next item, council to consider second reading of an ordinance to amend the code of the County of York, South Carolina, Chapter one fifty-four, Sections fifteen-point-oh-nine-five, one fifty-four, one-ten, one fifty-four, one-twelve, one fifty-four, one-twenty-five, one fifty-four, one-twenty-six, and Chapter one fifty-four appendix, charts, drafts, figures, schedules, Sections one, schedule of fees and charges, A six and B one through five, in order to amend the requirements for road inspections, the design standards for roads and sidewalks, the posting of improvement guarantee funds for road construction, the warranty periods for road maintenance, and, and the form of performance guarantees, to eliminate binder course paving bonds and roadway surface course paving guarantee funds, to amend the fees for water and sewer reinspection, and improvement guaranteed funds, and to provide for other matters related thereto.
Move to approve, second reading.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Next item, rezoning, consider second reading, case number fifteen-oh-five, rezoned property from BD two to L Light Industrial Conditional at intersection of Charlotte Highway and West Liberty Hill Road in Clover Community.
Move to approve based on conditions.
Need a second?
I haven't seen the condition.
I got a, the motion, do I have a second?
Say.
Discussion. Mr. Williams.
I'm sorry.
I hadn't seen the conditions.
The applicant worked with the neighbors-
Okay, the, the, the conditions we got the email about?
Yes, and that-
Okay, so we haven't had any conditions that can work yet, okay.
The, yes, so we sent the staff a memo and outlined the condition that they had, they had worked out, but it contained reversionary zoning, so we recommended that if you are going to apply a condition, that it only be conditioned to the specific use.
Mr. Henderson.
I'm fine with it.
Okay. Any other comments, questions, if there being none, question on the-
Yeah, I just wanna clarify that the conditions we're talking about are the ones that came from the email from the planning staff department about limiting to, basically changing it to LI zoning with the conditions that BD2, any use that's currently allowed in BD2, plus personal storage is what will be allowed on this property by condition.
That is correct.
Yes, sir, Mr. Williams.
I have a question, just an earlier vote that we had made the comment that, I guess there can't be a return to a zoning, but...
It gets reheard, and then you replay the scenery.
So this, basically, the neighbors didn't have a problem with the personal storage, but they also didn't have a problem with BD2. So the applicant says, "Well, we can do BD2 and personal storage, and hopefully everybody's happy."
Okay.
And we will find that out before third reading, I'm sure.
Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Next item, consider third reading, case number 1506, rezoned property from RC2 to AGC, intersection of Mobley Store and Birkin Roads in the McConnells Community.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Next item, consider third reading, case number 1511, rezoned property from BD2 to RC1 at 32 Quayside Court in Lake Wiley Community.
Move third reading, please.
To approve.
To approve.
Need a second.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Next item, consider third reading, case number 1512, rezoned property from RUD to RC1 at 5760 Highway 557 in the Lake Wiley Community.
Move to approve third reading of case 15-12.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Next item, consider third reading, case number 1513, request for a major amendment to approximately 106 acres of 150 acre planned development, Halle 160 in the Fort Mill Community.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Next item, consider first reading of an ordinance ordering a referendum pursuant to the County Bond Act for the purpose of determining whether York County, South Carolina, shall be authorized to issue not exceeding $89,770,000 of general obligation bonds to obtain funds with which to construct capital improvements.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Yes, yes, sir.
I just wanna make a quick comment. And I know this is obviously first reading, but I just wanna put out to those in attendance and the rest of council that, you know, we're about to ask the taxpayers for $90 million to do a multitude of projects, helping with the courthouse, and a whole bunch of other things. And I know we're in budget discussions, and we've had some discussions on what should go in this budget, what should we take out of this budget. But I would have some real heartburn to anticipate asking for $90 million coming up, and then on the flip side, when we're in these budget talks, talking about cutting some things that helps this community. You know, I think the taxpayers that put up some of this money, that pay the taxes, that foot the bills, I always have in the back of my mind, when we make certain cuts that help and aid certain situations, whether it's organizations or do certain things in certain communities, I don't wanna sit up here and build York County up to this glamorous situation, but at the same time, pull the rug out from under some of the smaller and less fortunate, whether it's organizations or people in communities in York County. So I'll be keeping a close eye on how our ensuing budget talks go as to how this referendum shapes up and where all the support comes from or not support goes to. So just wanted to put that out there, because we do have a great community, a wonderful community, and we're growing. We do wanna keep up with providing adequate facilities, but at the same time, we can't forget about what makes this community so special, and that's the people. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. And just for further clarification, that involves the family courtroom needs, expansion needs in the Eastern Justice Center Heckel Complex area, the Moss Justice Center expansion, magistrate needs in Clover and Fort Mill, and recycling center expansion needs. Did I leave something out? Think I got it?
Sorry.
Okay. Next item, council to consider an emergency temporary dwelling permit request, 2582 Meadow Road. I gotta...
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Yes, sir, Mr. Williams.
I guess I got concerns that this does not, it doesn't meet the... Staff, I got the same concern staff does, that it doesn't meet the hardship that we have written into the ordinance. And that's why I did not make the motion, because I, you know, my understanding is we have an ordinance that it's supposed to fit into, and apparently this one does not. So... And in all fairness, we've been a little bit liberal with it, but I think this one is probably very liberal, if we award this one. That's just why I was pointing out the concern.
What is the, as far as the time limit, is it per six months? Is that the way that works?
Yes, it is for six months, and they can get an extension.
Can I have clarification? Who made the motion again?
I did, but I'm sitting here...
Would you defer to the amendment from Mr. Winkler?
Yeah, I'll defer to Mr. Winkler, if he wants to run with it.
I have, for some clarification, was there a plan on building the pole barn? Have we talked, have they talked about when they plan on building our residence? Because that's gotta be done within the six months, or...
As far as I know, no, they have not identified their timeframe for building the residence. They said they wanna do the pole barn and then do the house.
So just for clarification, are you for this or against?
I am against the temporary dwelling permit.
Okay, sir.
Because we're not even asking for a dwelling.
It says next spring in the letter.
So for the record, the council member's district this involves is against this, so to, we could vote the motion down if that would make it the simplest way to do this, which it would be.
Correct.
So if there's no further discussion, question on the motion, all those in favor of saying granting this, say aye. All those opposed, no?
No.
No. Okay. Next item, consider approval of nominated applicants for service for boards and commissions from the Finance and Operations Committee meeting on May 18, 2015, along with nominations from the floor. Chairman Johnson, you wanna take over?
I'll make a motion to approve the following. Laurie Helms for the Rock Hill York County CVB District 7, David Roberts for the Rock Hill CVB at large, Craig Lentz for the York County Cultural and Heritage Commission, District 7, Clyde Buchanan Flint Hill Fire Tax District Board, Glenn Reynolds Flint Hill Fire Tax District Board, Michael Knight Flint Hill Fire Tax District Board, Randy McCurry Flint Hill Fire Tax District Board, Brenda Artemis Catawba Mental Health Board, Daniel Simmers Catawba Mental Health Board, Thomas Mueller Catawba Mental Health Board, Karen Nichols Catawba Mental Health Board, Trina Perry Council on Aging, Joshua Bacus, Keep York County Beautiful at Large, April Hershey, Keep York County Beautiful at Large, Thomas Nadrotowski, Keep York County Beautiful at Large, Micah Lynn Fire Prevention Board of Appeals, District 1, Thomas Palmer Building Board of Appeals, Darius Alexander Building Board of Appeals, and Kathy Holin Catawba Regional Workforce Investment Board.
And we got a second. Are there any nominations from the floor?
I just have a quick question.
Yes, sir. Discussion.
I know I had a applicant send in for the H-Tax Commission. Where is that at in the process?
Do that tonight.
We'll talk about it when I brief you.
Yes.
I would like to know, when we approve these, it would just help, especially the at-large slots, if we could just have what district that person is in set to the side, so that I could know that information when we approve it.
So if they're at large, what district do they live in? Okay. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Next item, an ordinance to amend the code of York County, the Rock Hill York County Convention and Investors Bureau, Chapter 32, Section 3203, to provide for the appointment of an ex officio member from the Hospitality Tax Committee, Section 32.04, to provide for the chairperson serving as an ex officio member of the Hospitality Tax Committee and other matters related thereto.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Johnson, you wanna clarify anything?
I think it does exactly what it says. We've already passed this, passed the CVB, and now we're just reversing it, or I guess we've done it as to...
Reciprocity.
No, we're just doing reciprocity between the CVB and the H-Tax Committee, to allow their chairs to serve as ex officio.
Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Next item, council to consider, excuse me, memorandum of understanding between York County Catawba Regional Council of Governments and Catawba Regional Development Corporation.
Move to approve.
Need a second.
Second.
Discussion. Bill, you wanna...
We have a colleague here.
Yes, sir. Do you wanna come forward and just give some exploratory comments?
Got to earn your overtime.
That's right. My name is Cole McKinney. I'm the Regional Initiatives Director with the Catawba Regional Council of Governments. I appreciate your time tonight. I know we're running late. I do have some handouts, if it would be helpful if you would like. I've got a copy of the MOU and a copy of the, have they got that in their packet? Okay. And a copy of the press release. As many of you may have seen, we received $5.6 million of funding from the South Carolina Housing Development and Finance Board in Columbia for the explicit purpose of blight removal within the four county region that the COG serves. That's York, Chester, Lancaster, and Union, South Carolina. What this basically allows us to do is to go in and purchase properties that have blighted housing on them. These would be houses that are falling in and are uninhabitable. They have to be uninhabited. All the property, all of the dwellings on the property have to be uninhabited as well. So if you have a house that's derelict, sitting in front of a mobile home, for example, that is being occupied, we can't do anything with that. But if all of the dwellings are unoccupied and considered blighted or derelict, we can go in and purchase the property. We will remove the blighted structures. We can do mobile homes. We have to provide proof to the state that we destroy the mobile homes if we do that, because they do have to be blighted and uninhabitable. We will re-green the property. That basically means we'll grade it, remove any underground storage tanks, we'll do asbestos abatement, and all those usual things that we do when we do demolition, and plant it with grass. Basically turn it back into a developable property is our hope. The goal of this is to, number one, remove the blight to improve the property values of the surrounding properties, and number two, is to get these back on the tax rolls as well, because we know that a lot of these are derelict and their taxes have tax liens against them. As part of the purchasing process, we will settle those tax liens as well, so that the county and if they're in a municipality will get their taxes that are in arrears as well. So that's a benefit to the jurisdictions also. We are required to hold the properties for three years. The reason for that is, is the funding that is allowing for this comes from the Department of Treasury's hardest-hit funds. They will come to us in the way of a three-year forgivable mortgage from SE Housing Corp. So basically, in the first year, a third of the mortgage, we have $35,000 per property, so that $35,000, if we spend it off, we spend $20,000 on the property, then it's a $20,000 mortgage and so on. So let's say it's a $30,000 project to clear a piece of property. That will come in the way of a $30,000 forgivable mortgage from SE Housing Corp. In the first year, a third of that goes away, the next year, another third, and the last year, the final third. We're partnering with the Catawba Regional Development Corporation, which is our nonprofit affiliate. They will hold title to the property after that three-year term. Per the MOU, we will market the property for six months following that, and hopefully sell it to a developer that will be able to redevelop it as a property, get it back on the tax rolls. Again, that's the ultimate goal of this. What we're asking for the county and all the jurisdictions that are signing the MOU throughout the four county region in exchange are two things. One is, we don't have the capacity to maintain these properties in accordance to local code during that three-year hold period. So in exchange for us removing that blight from the community, we're asking that the county, in this case, maintain the property over that three-year period, basically keep the grass cut. If there are any non-conforming lots, we have some properties within York County, I know, at least within the city of York, that are on lots that don't conform to current buildable use. In other words, they're on a very narrow lot, they've got a building on them, once that building comes down, it's a non-developable lot, because the setbacks aren't there for you to rebuild. If that is the case, we're asking that the county purchase that piece of property back from us at the end of that three-year period for a dollar. The reason is, is that we can't do anything with it. It would be non-sellable at that point. The last thing our organization wants to do is to have, we're looking to do 40 properties in each county, have 160 properties scattered around the four county region. So ultimately, we want these back in the hands of either a developer or the jurisdictions. So I'll be happy to answer any question.
Clarification, if it's in, say, the town of York?
Yes.
The town maintains it, or the county maintains?
The town would maintain that. We have an MOU in place for York.
So we'd only develop, we'd only maintain just non-municipal land?
Yes, sir. It would just be the ones that are in the non-incorporated areas. Yeah.
Mr. Winkler?
By the same token, if it's, again, non-developable property, but it's in the city, then the city buys it, not the county.
Absolutely. Correct. Correct. Yeah, this MOU would only apply to those in the unincorporated area.
The city of York's done a few of these.
Yes, well, we're in the process of vetting a couple of the properties with the city of York right now, but we do have an MOU in place with them. Yes, sir.
Mr. Roddy?
Yeah, I'm actually on the COG board, and I remember having these discussions...
Yes, sir.
...a short while back, and good to see that, you know, we have this opportunity, because we've had some discussions, maybe the early part of last year or the year before, about how does the county handle property that's eyesore, dilapidated property, and we haven't really had much of those conversations lately. But it's good to hear that, you know, we'll have some funds through you guys for you all to go out and try to take care of these properties, clean up the area, and offer them back in a different capacity. My question would be, what if, are these properties identified through you all, or could the county send over a list?
No, sir. Yes, we went through the application process, your staff actually sent us over a list of properties. And once we have the MOU in place, we'll work directly with your staff and your code enforcement folks to kinda identify those properties. We'll also work with the Forfitted Land Commission as well.
Yes, yes, sir.
I just wanna ask, is this any form of trickle-down from HUD?
No, sir. There are no HUD funds in this whatsoever. This is all Department of Treasury hardest-hit funds. There were 19 states that were identified as being hardest-hit by the downturn in the economy in 2009, and South Carolina was one of those. So these funds came directly from Treasury. You may remember the Neighborhood Stabilization Program, which was to mitigate foreclosure. These are actually funds, you know, largely that were left over from that.
Those taxpayer funds that are kinda scooping in?
It's Department of Treasury.
So it's still taxpayer's money?
Yes, sir.
Right.
But we're not, just as a point of clarification, we're not bound by any of the HUD regulate, you know, we know how heavily regulated those funding streams are. We're not bound by any of that.
So in other words, and I'm still gonna ask this question.
Sure.
Does COG or any entity have a right to change the zoning at any point for multifamily, multilevel units, or any other undesirable properties that would be a problem for the neighbors?
No, sir. No, sir. We would not go in and try to, you know, change zoning or anything to that nature. We would simply purchase the property, and during the three-year period, we can't really do anything with it. And we would not petition to rezone it to...
At any point, that cannot be forced upon the local folks?
No, sir.
Okay.
Does COG pay the taxes? You bring it current, but then you pay current taxes for the...
Over that three-year hold, actually, over that three-year hold period, we would not be paying taxes on it. The mortgage would be right. But after that three-year hold period, once it's sold, then it would be back in private hands.
If it's sold to private hands?
Yes, sir.
That, Ms. Cox?
I guess, I mean, this sounds like a good program. It sounds very general, and I would like to see the list of the parcels that have already been submitted. If there's a list of them, what makes them program-eligible? I guess one of the things that it does is the COG buys the property, and after three years, we're obligating ourselves as the county to purchase it back if, for some reason, it doesn't meet the requirement.
The only time where the county would be obligated to purchase a property back is if it was a non-conforming lot. If it's a developable lot, the county is not obligated to buy that back at the end of the three-year period.
Okay, so what does the COG do with the purchase proceeds, or when they...
It's actually not the COG that would actually own the properties, it's the Catawba Regional Development Corporation.
Okay. What, what do you do with the proceeds of the sale?
So that would go back into their, into their funding stream. They do small business lending. I mean, anybody that's, uh, familiar with the Development Corporation, they, they work with, uh, revolving loan funds for small businesses, uh, as well as SBA, um, small business lending as well.
Have we ever approved one of these agreements before? Michael?
I don't think so.
No, I don't.
I, I like the idea. I think I'd, I'd prefer to have some more details personally, just because it, it seems like we don't have all of the, the information that was previously provided by council.
I'm a little bit, uh, a little bit with heartburn with this. And you're saying there would be 40 parcels per county?
That's correct.
Four counties?
That's correct.
160 parcels for $6 million?
Yes, sir.
Can I make a?
Yes.
I just want to make a quick comment. I think, you know, being on, on the COG and heard some of the background information of actually how this was going to work, we're not actually, York County's not on the hook for this money. And like you said, the only time that we would be even offered a property for that one dollar is as if it was undeveloped. So if it's a, a lot that wasn't big enough to put a house on or a business on, then it's only a dollar if it's coming to us. And, and if it's in the city, it goes to the city of whether it's Rock Hill, Fort Mill, you know, but the COG is servicing, um, is it, I know it's York, Lancaster, Chester, Union?
And Union, South Carolina, yes, sir.
Yeah, so, um, we're not on the hook to front any of this money. And if it's going to service, it is actually servicing a need that we actually talked about maybe a year and a half ago, which was go in and, and address dilapidated properties. And I think when we got to talking about it, we were sitting here scratching our heads saying, where are we going to get this money from if we identify our properties that we wanted to kind of tear down and clean up the area? And here's an opportunity that some money's being handed down. And let's don't get caught up in thinking too far ahead. If our COG doesn't receive this funding, it's going to go somewhere else to help clean their areas up as well. So if, if we're not participating in the program, we're stuck with, uh, blighted area or dilapidated houses or old businesses or tire companies or whatever it is that we could use this money to help clean up the areas. And if we don't accept it, you know, it's going to move on to another community.
One, one point of clarification, just to make sure everybody understands, this is only for residential properties. We can't buy commercial, we can't buy industrial properties. They have to be, uh, residential in nature and uninhabited. And it's, it's completely voluntary, too. If, if the landowner is unwilling to, to sell the property to us, we, we'll have an appraisal done on the property and that's, you know, we're not going to pay more than what the appraisal is for it. If they're unwilling to, to sell it to us, we, we stop there and move on to the next one.
That answered my question. I had my hand up, but that answered my question.
Could you say when you were doing the original presentation that if we had to buy some undeveloped property that we could actually give to the people on the inside?
Sure, I mean, you can, that, that's at your discretion. We've had, uh, conversations with other jurisdictions that have mentioned exactly that, that at the end of this, uh, if after the, the six-month, we will market it for six months. If it's still, uh, still available, is there an opportunity for that to come back to the, to the county so that they could give it to the adjacent landowners to get it back on the tax rolls? And that's something we could certainly, uh, you know, entertain discussing with you.
Mr. Williams?
Yeah, I say along with the chairman and bump on, uh, COG as well. And when, one of the biggest reasons that this was appealing to me when it first brought up was what they were talking about. Two, about two years ago, in fact, Jim Baker was still here. We had two pieces of property that were brought to us back, uh, about blighted. One of it was a commercial piece of property and one of them was the house that had been on fire, that had caught on fire, but nobody had, we didn't have any funds or any ways to tear the house down.
You're talking about the intersection of India Hook and?
The commercial property is still there on the corner of.
Intersection of Mount Galen?
Yeah, intersection of Mount Galen and, uh, and India Hook. The, I bet the firehouse is still there, but I don't know. Um, but that's, that's one of the biggest reasons it was appealing, uh, to me. And, and we did get much, much better explanation, or we got the, the full benefit of, of a longer explanation. Although I think Cole talked very fast and, and covered a whole lot of stuff.
Yeah, but was that in deference to Christie's comments? Do you know if that was one of the choices?
What's that?
That commercial property you're talking about that's blighted?
No, you cannot do commercial property with this, so, so.
That's what I'm confused about is the list of properties that we're given, we're given from, we've already given a list to you from the county?
Well, we're not bound by that list. We, we asked each one of the jurisdictions to give us a list of properties on the front end when we did the application back in November to identify the need within the area, so.
But it's contingent upon them approving it. And I'm just wondering, was it available for consideration for? It, it needs to be something that is recommended by the county council, but it's really the private property owners that have to agree to it. So it seems like there ought to be an opportunity for the community to have an option to come out and put themselves on that list. It seems like the list.
That's absolutely there. That's absolutely there. We, we had an article that appeared in the newspaper.
Well, the list just proved the need. The list is, we have dilapidated houses that need to be torn down. It did not say these are the houses that we're tearing down.
Correct. We're not bound to, to only do those properties that are on the list that we received back in November. That was just, uh, an identification of need.
On the flip side, we're not bound to do any of them.
That's correct.
Okay. That's what, that was my understanding of it.
But you're only going to consider the ones that are on that list?
No, ma'am.
No.
No, ma'am. Any, any property that comes from your staff or that we get from, uh, you know, private citizens.
They can individually come to you?
They can individually come to us, as long as they meet the criteria, which is that it has to be, uh, we have $35,000 cap that we can spend on each one of the pieces of property. They have to be residential and they have to be unoccupied and they have to be identified. This is the, this, the one stipulation on the county side. They have to be identified as a blighted property by the jurisdiction.
Are any of the properties that are being considered or that have been proposed to you within the TIF districts of Rock Hill?
That I can't answer. Well, if they're within the, if they're within the city limits of Rock Hill, the city of Rock Hill got their, they actually received, uh, 670,000, I think, in funding. Yes, yes, sir. Yes, sir. So we won't be working within the city of Rock Hill on this. They got their own, uh, their, their own.
They just got the funding?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that it? Gentlemen, ladies? Um, I'm a little.
Care to share why you're a little hesitant?
Hesitant, but, um, certainly as you pointed out, Mr. Roddy, that it's a worthy cause to take care of blighted areas. It helps bays of all the surrounding properties. Um, as a COG member, I'm going to get, get a little concerned about the money coming from here to there and, and, and some interpretation of this is like taxpayers belling out people that didn't pay their property and then the taxpayers maintaining the property until we hopefully sell it. We take it off the public tax roll and all the negatives of that. But, um, I want to try to look at the whole picture of this and, uh, total picture. But, uh, that being said, question on the motion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose no?
No.
That was one.
Did you vote no?
The cheese stands alone.
Mr. Chairman, did you vote for or against it?
For.
Okay.
Yeah, if it's not a no, it's for. For what I said. Next item, council to consider award of bid number 2282 for the purchase of 15 sets of peak performance turnout gear on behalf of the Leslie Fire Department to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Newton's Fire and Safety of Sweepsunville, North Carolina. Never heard of that town. And the amount of $29,378.55. Need a motion?
Moved to approve.
Need a second?
Second.
Ms. Cox?
Um, actually, I would like for the council to hear from the tax district rep, chairman, um, about the reasons why moving forward with that bid bidder is not something that, that they would like to do. And so I'd like to give him an, an opportunity to speak before.
Yes, ma'am.
I make my comments.
Jerry Williams, 542 Alice Chalmers Road in Rock Hill. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And for the ones of you that may not know me, uh, I am chairman of the Fire District Board there and have been, uh, chief of Leslie Fire Department until I retired when I turned 70 years old back about seven years ago. So I decided that was long enough. Also, um, I sit in y'all's position there back in the seventies. I was, uh, served on the first county council, was chairman for four years of that time. And, uh, I know a lot of things that you go through and I appreciate what you do. There's one thing I remember that Melvin McCann told me and the rest of us on the board back then. Whatever we did, it needed to be above board. But as well as above board, it need to have the appearance of being above board in addition to that. So, uh, I'm here, I want to justify to you all why that we are not recommending as our tax board and fire department, uh, the low, the second-low bid. The low bidder, um, just didn't meet the qualification, didn't meet the material that was supposed to be. So they were automatically thrown out. So I'm wanting to explain to you why that we're not wanting to go with this particular one that you recommend in there. First of all, I want to give you a little short history and I'm going to be very brief with it on firefighter turnout gear. Back in the fifties, early fifties, forties, the only thing that firemen had that we had to fight fire with was a raincoat. It had a kind of a felt lining inside of it. If you got close to a fire, it would accidentally blister you. But it would, it would keep you from getting wet. The next thing that came along in the, uh, late fifties was, uh, Globe, Globe Fire, fire manufacturing company that made turnout gear, made it out of cotton duck. And it was similar to a canvas that a farmer used on his, uh, you know, to cover his hay up or whatever. Uh, and it had a, a thermal lining inside of it. It worked pretty good as far as keeping you from getting wet, but, uh, it would burn if you got close to the fire. So that wasn't safe. You couldn't go in and do an interior firefighting with that. Uh, then later on after that, there was a material that, uh, came on the market called Nomex. And that was in the market for a number of years there, uh, and worked pretty good. It was fire resistant, but it still was not, uh, it would burn. Uh, then in the late nineties, uh, late eighties and early nineties, uh, Selenese Corporation out here on Cherry Road in Rock Hill developed a product called PBI. You never been down there, that blue building that's still left on the other side of where the Selenese plant is? It's where all the PBI product for fire turnout gear is made in the United States. That turned out to be a, a very good product. It was totally fireproof. It had one fault, though. After a period of time, in the washing, cleaning of it, the fibers were very brittle and it would break and it wouldn't last very long. So they worked on that and they came up with, um, in the mid-nineties, uh, blend of Kevlar and PBI, 70% PBI and 30% Kevlar. This is the standard that all turnout gear is made for now for interior firefighting. This is what we at Leslie have been using since 1995 and a number of other departments here in, in the county have used this material all along. In May of, uh, 2014, our fire department requested, uh, the purchasing department to, uh, take bids on 15 sets of turnout gear for us. That was last year. And we have been using Janesville. It's just a, it's like Ford and Chevrolet. It's a manufacturer of turnout gear. That's who's we've been using since 1995 and have been well pleased with it. When I took that requisition over to, uh, Mr. Bill White, who was purchasing director then, he informed me that the county fire board had just recently taken bids on turnout gear, which we didn't know, and that, uh, they had awarded it to, uh, Newton's Fire, uh, Fire Equipment in Sweatsonville, North Carolina. And the name of it was Honeywell. Well, we'd never heard of Honeywell before. This is a, a new, new manufacturer. It's not Globe alike Janesville, who's been into it for, you know, 20 or 30 years. So anyway, he said that he could not, and I got his letter here, I can read it to you, but I'm not going to take that time. He said that he couldn't take bids on the material, uh, on new turnout gear for us since the county. Fire board had recommended this here and that the council had just approved buying all the turnout gear for this year from this particular company of this brand, which is Honeywell. Well, after this, I went back to our fire board and fire department and told them that, you know, what the problem was and that the county was going to give each fire department two sets of this turnout gear. So anyway, we got those two sets from the county or we requested it to try and we, uh, that was in, um, uh, around June of last year. Uh, it took until October the 14th for us to ever get those first two sets of turnout gear due to problems getting the measurements and the size and everything, you know, to fit everyone. So anyway, we gave those two sets to two of our most active firefighters there to evaluate this past October when we got there. We've been using it for about six months now and we just had to send one set back. The Fire Prevention Bureau came and picked it up to send it back. It's already coming loose at the seams up here around the neck and the collar on it. So, uh, seeing the problems that we were going to have there, we didn't feel that this was going to be the turnout gear that we wanted. So we went in May and asked the purchasing department to, let's take bids on the Janesville specs that we had been buying all along. And that was done and I think the specs came in, or the bids came in around the 30th of March, somewhere along in there. And they had three bids back. The low bidder was Globe from Safe Industries. They were $25,359. Newton's with Honeywell was $29,378.25. And NAFCO with the Janesville product that we had specified was $30,191.60. Anderson Fire Equipment that sold another brand, they opted to no-bid it. Uh, the low bidder took 29, 28 exceptions to our specifications and did not even bid PBI blend. They bid the Nomex, which was the old material that we didn't want. So they were automatically thrown out and rejected. The second-low bid is, you all are considering tonight, is, uh, from Newton for the, and they took 13 exceptions to the specifications, with the most important being that it does not meet NFPA 1971's requirements for turnout gear for this type of performance. And the moisture barrier or the thermal barrier does not meet it. So as I said to you before, using two sets for six months, we are seeing problems of high wear here and don't feel it's going to hold up. And it's being sent back and we have not gotten it back yet and it's been gone for about two weeks. I also have a concern of what the fire, county fire board did this past Thursday night concerning this turnout gear. Since then, when they gave these two sets of out, uh, they allocated two sets for every fire department, which was 32 sets for this year. It was discussed at the fire board meeting that they had 14 sets that nobody had requested. That, um, for some reason, nobody had requested it. And the discussion was that if we, we're going to lose this money in our line of budget this year if we don't go in and buy this turnout gear and give it to the departments. Well, if 14 departments or 14 sets are not being used and any of the rest of them, if they're seeing any problems in it like we're having with these two sets that we got, this is something that I don't think we want to buy and, and spend the county money on. So, um, anyway, uh, a motion was made at that board meeting to buy these 14 sets of turnout gear and to give each one of, each fire department, one of these new sets, even if they don't want it. And I think Ms. Moore, she was at the meeting, she can verify what I'm saying, that this was taken up at that meeting. That money's not going to be lost. If they don't spend that money in that line item, it'll just roll over into their budget this next year. There's no money lost. Why buy 14 sets of turnout gear that departments may not be wanting to just put in a closet somewhere and not use? You know, that's my, my reason for it. So, uh, we are recommending, we go with the Janesville, which I've got a set right here that I, one of our most active firefighters has been using since 2002, that I brought for you to show. And I would have had this other set, but the Fire Prevention Bureau has taken it to get it sent back and try to get it repaired. Breaking that down, even though it was the high bidder, uh, the difference in this turnout gear here that we're specifying and the one that you're looking at there was $813.11 for the 15 sets. And that equates to $54.20 per unit. If you break that down over a 10-year period of time, that's only $5.42 that we'd be paying more for the higher-priced turnout gear here than taking this here with it. I don't think it's going to be the job boss. And we recommend and I fire board that you not accept the Newton's and that you accept the NAFCO bid.
Well, essentially what you're saying, if we go with the recommended bidder, we're going to end up spending more of the taxpayers' money.
I think so. If, if it's going to perform just like this, two sets that we have, I don't think it's going to hold up. And we have been well pleased, we've, we've been using this since 95. I've got my original set that I got in 95 that, um, you know, is, had, never had no problem. It looks almost as good as this, but now keep in mind, I was the fire chief, I'm not doing interior firefighting. And this here is designed for interior firefighting. What we do in NFPA. What we do, NFPA wants you to move that out every 10 years that an interior firefighter not have turnout gear more than 10 years old. What we do, we take it and move it to some of our newer guys and put our newer interior firefighters in used gear.
Really, what you're saying is just spend just a fraction, tiny little bit more to get-
Right. The total bid was, like I say, $813.11 difference-
Get a better product and get a lot more life out of it.
About 10 years, that's only $5.
Yeah. Councilman Williams.
And I agree with that logic, but I guess the, the supporting information we got didn't exactly agree with that. And I get, this letter took me back to when we didn't have a rural fire, wherever Billy is.
Fire marshal, whatever.
Yeah, yeah, fire marshal. And, and they brought turnout gear and they were talking about it, might be the same stuff. I don't know. But, but, but what Billy sent us addresses that somewhat and says that the, that the second lowest bidder does meet the qualifications. And there's two, two things you said that, that disturbed me. One thing is, the letter says is that they've been holding on to that one uniform so we could see it, and then I guess they, I guess they-
Well, I don't know if they holding on to it. I was informed this afternoon that it was sent back.
The second thing was if, if they're buying, if we're buying 14 sets of uniforms that nobody wants, everything I've been preaching about, about budget is, is, I mean, that disturbs me greatly. So I would like to hear from Mr. Weatherford as well, because yeah, like I said, the, the information that we got was different than what I've heard, but disturbs me nonetheless.
This was the set of gear that was in question of the quality of the gear. Technician went out, picked it up, brought it in myself. Training officer and the technician supervisor has looked at this gear that was inferior quality or whatever. After looking at it, the only thing that we could find was on this throat tab, there's a little bit of ravel right here, where the seam was folded over and it's handsawed and whoever did it flinched a little bit and that seam just didn't get sewed for that one inch completely. The day we called the rep was the day he showed up, said this gear is warranted for 10 years. That's a manufacturer's defect. I'll take care of it. Not a problem. So this is the gear that was in question.
That was only been washed one time, yes.
We've looked at it and that's the only defect we found. So it does meet the NFPA 1971.
According to there, they took an exception to that, Billy. You look at the specs, they did not meet 1971 specs.
I didn't get to see it all.
I've got them up there if you want to take a look at it.
Billy, so you, you are saying that that is one wash and that is some framing from one wash that you noticed. Is the, I noticed in the, in the statements that you had given, and I know that Council, Councilman Williams had pointed out that the, the information didn't bear out what Jerry said, but I think it, I think it does. If you look at what Jerry has pointed out, I think what we're talking about is a difference of 800 something dollars. This is special tax district funds. This is not county funds. This is coming out of the special tax district. It's some, you know, on some level, you know, of all people, I am one who votes for less taxes, but if it results in an actual cost that we're gonna be losing use of the gear for any period of time, and that within just six months to, 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 to be able to have access to it, that has a cost as well. And, you know, sometimes deferring to the, to the group as long as there's no conflict of interest. And I want to be very, very clear about one thing, that I'm, you know, that I've been a champion of, and that is to make sure that we put in rules and restrictions to prevent conflicts of interest. And I heard rumors that that existed. I want to make sure that it's clear that there is no one either, on either side that has an interest, a financial interest in either Honeywell or NAFCO. And that's, right?
I don't think so. Just-
So we don't have any-
He was used to work for NAFCO, but he does not work for them anymore.
And he can't get any financial benefit from whatever this is. This is purely the special tax district's request that they use their money to get the little bit better product for their, their firemen and to use their own tax funds to, to be able to do that. And, and one other question that I had down at the bottom of your note, Billy, it said, was, was it bid out at 255 and not 225? Is that, is that an exception?
There was a TPB that was bid out, and I think Jerry had give us the letter that said it was 225. And what I looked at was 255 or, you know, and there was a difference there, and I didn't understand where that came from. Maybe Jerry might have-
That came off their specs on what they said.
So it doesn't meet that spec?
They took exception to that.
It doesn't meet, it doesn't meet that spec either. There were 13 of them. And, and again, I think all of the folks on, on this council are concerned about cost. And I appreciate the work that you put into this, Billy and Tiara, for looking into that. I guess from the perspective of, after having sat down and, and I met with Jerry as well as the fire district board representative from District 5 and looked through all of the information and, you know, I guess, I guess that it would make sense.
You know, the difference in the cost, our department would be willing to pay the difference in the cost, $800 and some dollars, but-
One point I want to make is, and I think we learned the last lesson in our infant times about fire trucks and what we were warned and what happened, that I would rather listen to the guys that are using it all the time, have had experience with both, and say, hey, you're gonna save money and get a lot longer worth it for this little bit of money. I'm gonna vote against the motion.
The only thing that I guess that I've heard that makes me question the quality of it, of course, that you got 14 sets that nobody have taken, the, is that because they don't like this brand, they won't wear it, or, or all the rest of them, or?
My opinion is no. It's the fact that we've got some fire chiefs that's not doing their due diligence to get their employees or their firefighters their gear. If they have to come and request it, and they just have not. And then they want to fuss because they want to get their gear replaced every 10 years. And we've got a plan in place to kind of do that, but we have to have their help. They need to come to us and say, I've got some members that need some gear, and they haven't done that. And the fire board knows that that gear is allotted and it should be given out, and that's what they're looking to do. We've got some chiefs that have not asked for gear at all this year.
They, and the others, like Christie was talking about, they want, the one thing that you did have in your letter that was still a question was whether or not that two, the 225 and 255 difference, and does that affect your recommendation? How does, what's your recommendation if you get to see that, or do you need to see that, or have you seen that?
I would like to see it. I'm not a manufacturer, so I don't know what all that means. I've talked to several vendors, and you specify a certain outer garment, a certain thermal barrier and all that, one may have another option that another dealer or vendor didn't have that kind of limits them or handcuffs them to a certain number. So if you're looking for a number, you can kind of pick that particular vendor to get that number. And maybe somebody else can't meet that. But if you tell them, just give them the best gear you got, they can bid out something better. You know, but when you specify this, this, and this as part of that garment, that's what they got to bid. So some exceptions were like the-
Hang on, Mr. Roddy.
Trim, or reflective trim. They had to take an exception to that because it was bid out, that they needed perforated trim. There's only one vendor on the market that had-
And that's the problem that we had last time, the specs were written for one particular jacket. And I just want to make sure we're trying, we're, for then, we were trying to get away from that. I hope we are getting away from that.
Most of the exceptions on this right here were minor, like you say, you know, you know, and you're not gonna get the same thing from everybody.
Mr. Roddy.
We'd used this company two years and bought 57 sets, and to my knowledge, this was the first set that we've had a problem with.
And, and my short time on council, I remember maybe two, two and a half years ago, we went through this stink about turnout gear.
That's the same one I'm-
And it was, it was, it stunk from top to bottom, and it basically got down to, this is what we've been wearing, we don't want to wear anything else, and it had the, it had the fill of the specifications were written so that we can get the same thing that we were getting uncomfortable with. But when you do that, you're kind of, you're narrowing the playing field, and it's like preferential treatment going towards one vendor. And I think even then, it was a question, it was a small difference in price, and I think we end up going, if I remember correctly, we paid a little more for that turnout gear. But if we're gonna start doing that, and just because it's a special tax, special tax district's funding, we can't just say it's not our money, because we give them the authority to collect this money. It's bid out through our procurement process, so we're ultimately responsible for how they spent it. Now, if we're gonna keep making these exceptions to the rule on turnout gear or other things, we just need to let the fire districts bid their own step, do their own thing, but don't come through our policies and then try to rewrite them to meet, whether it's a special tax district or whatever. And our rules state that we have to take the lowest bidder. Now, every time we bid out something, there's always gonna be a front runner, a second lowest bidder, a third lowest bidder. And if everybody took exception to it, we didn't want that particular product, we would always be paying more because we're not the ones wearing the fire gear, we're not the ones driving the police vehicles, we're not the ones, you know, with all the services that we bid out. So if we're gonna open this thing up to finding reasons not to use, I mean, I can understand kicking out the, the lowest bidder that didn't meet the standard. But if the second lowest bidder met the standard, then I don't care if it's $50, $500, $5,000, our policy is go with the lowest bidder. And I've, I've had some conversations in the past about trying to use whether it's a local guy that may come in, in second place in the low bid process. We can't use him, even though we know this money's gonna recirculate back through the community. Our policy says the lowest bidder gets to bid. Now, granted, I can understand that, I think it was whichever company got kicked out because they didn't meet the specification. But then we go to the next one. If they met a reasonable amount of specification, there's not a significant, you know, one jacket weighs six pounds and another jacket weighs 10 pounds, of course, that's gonna affect the ability of the fireman to do whatever he's doing. But if it's comparable, I'm, I'm for sticking with the policy, and our policy says we go to the, to the next lowest bidder if the first one's kicked out. And I understand it's only a marginal difference of $5 a year, and it's been offered to, to, for the tax district to pay the difference. But we are bound by policy, and if we start swaying and varying with the policy, we opening ourselves up down the road. If, if I wanted to say, well, it's, it's only costs $2,000, $3,000 to get a local vendor to give him this contract, we're opening ourselves up to do that. But if we're not gonna do it when it comes to a local vendor, if we're not gonna do it when it comes to any other thing, you know, we're bound by policy. And I don't want to open it up for turnout gear if we're not gonna open it up for other items that we bid. So I'm, regardless of what anybody else does up here or feels about it, I'm gonna go with what the policy says, and the policy says go to the second lowest bidder if the first one's kicked out. So that's mine.
Mr. Johnson.
I'm, what I, I guess what I'm struggling with in this is more how this bid process happened. What I hear from, what I'm hearing from Billy is that basically we, we did a bid for a jacket that only the people in Decatur, Alabama could make, and then we, we're not happy with all the exceptions. I'm struggling if we've really only had 58 jackets and only one has had a problem, that there's defects with them. I, I'm gonna have to agree with Bump on this, that Honeywell is the second lowest bidder, and I, and I intend to go with the second lowest bidder tonight.
I have one quick. I heard question, and, you know, NFPA, does it meet it, does it not meet it? What, you said you thought you did, but you hadn't seen everything he's got. Was there, you know, that, that concern, if there's a question about whether or not it meets the safety requirement, then that concerns me. I talked to Christie earlier and told her that, you know, for the most part, when I first looked at it, you know, I think the fire, fire districts control their own money to a point, but there's a reason we have a fire board and that type thing too. And, and looking at this and hearing the whole story now, you know, I do have some concerns. I mean, $800 is not a whole lot of money, but, you know, Mr. Johnson sat here a couple weeks ago and read a lot of $800 and $400 and $500 when we were looking at budgets. And, you know, that's something that we, we looked at every line on. If there is a legitimate safety reason for that, instead of that, I mean, you said we've had, how many of these in the last two years now?
56, 57 sets, something like that. The fire board has bought the last two years, and this was the only one that we've had any defects.
There's 14 that haven't been used, though, they're sitting still.
Those are additional to the 57.
Oh, are they? I guess it's, it's six months, not, is that, is that a reasonable amount of time for one wash for that to, to occur? Because I think, you know, there, there's, one wash does seem to suggest that if you're seeing tears like that, that it's not gonna last very long. And I know that Leslie has a lot more calls if you look at the documents that have been produced.
The only thing I see with this thing is this handsaw and whoever was running through the machine, did it wide, get the seam where it should have been? It dropped down just a little bit and let that little bit pray out? It was supposed to have been bent over and sawed.
And I wasn't quite through, so I wanted, you know, the, I sold clothing for 25 years in my previous life, and there are occasional defects in thousands of productions. So that, like I said, the, whether or not it meets the safety standards is what concerns me. And if it does, then, you know, that's- And whether or not we write a request that is, you know, makes it so that only one company can get that bid, that concerns me.
Yeah.
Label on it says it meets the NFPA 1971 2013 edition.
Okay. They took an exception to that on their bid, sir. Said it don't meet.
So let me just, I think everybody's asked their questions. Let me refocus my understanding of what was said. And I might have jumped to the wrong conclusion. Did I hear you say, Jerry, that y'all had tried these outfits before and they didn't hold up well, and the other outfits did great? Or we just talking about one-
No, this is the first time we tried this.
That's the first, just that one jacket.
We've always been using the Janesville before.
The name has changed.
And Globe, if Globe had come in and bid what they make is comparable to this, and they've been low bidder, we wouldn't have any problem going with Globe, because Globe's a good manufacturer. But they just bid the wrong material.
And just in one sentence again, what was the issue with that jacket?
The clothes tab.
Well, it's only been through one washing. And you look at the material on this versus this one here that's, this is 2002, and this guy here is a Rock Hill fireman. During the daytime, he's with us two days out of the week. Well, to every other. He works, you know that schedule there. And this jacket here has probably been washed probably 50 times or more during this period of time. He has answered more calls in our department than any other guy, and you can compare the materials on the tape. You know, and look, look at this one here, how it's held up. That's what we're going by.
You're asking to stay with the same group that you've been using since?
Because, and another complaint about it is that this, this does not fit as well as this right here with our guys. And that's been a problem on getting it to start with, was to get it fitted, wasn't it, Billy?
Michael Ma, he hasn't touched this gear.
I mean, no, one of the guys from the council didn't have, he got his.
One of the guys that was having trouble getting fitted, lost 40 pounds from the time he was fitted, the gear came in three weeks later.
Jerry, so are you saying that that, that, does that meet spec? Is it, is the, is the jacket that cost 800 or the, that cost $800?
No, the whole set, the whole set.
That's what I'm saying, though. Is it not gonna meet your needs?
Well, it probably would meet the needs, but it's completely different from what we have been using.
I think we've heard everything we need to hear. So question on the motion, all those in favor say aye. Oppose no.
I'm gonna say no.
Two.
Thank you.
Next item, council to consider award of bid number 2289 regarding rental uniforms for county employees to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Uni Force, Uni First Corporation, in the amount of $31,204 annually for an initial three-year period with an option for an additional two one-year extensions.
Move to approve.
Say.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye. Oppose no. Next item, council to consider award of proposal RFP 2287 regarding services to post levy sheets on designated parcels throughout York County on behalf of York County's Tax Collection Office to Palmetto Posting Incorporated- Collection Office to Palmetto Posting Incorporated of Spartanburg for the total cost of $20 per parcel for 1,200-plus parcels not to exceed $37,500.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye. Oppose no. Next item, council to consider authorization of contract negotiations with Good Success Consulting Group Incorporated of Lyxter, South Carolina regarding proposal RFP 2290 for alcohol and drug treatment consulting services on behalf of the solicitor's office for an amount not to exceed $50,044.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye. Oppose no. Next item, consider approval for planning engineering and county management departments to proceed with applying for and accepting if awarded one CMAQ grant through RFAT's 2015-2016 grant funding cycle in the amount of $800,000 for improvements to the intersection of Carowinds Boulevard Pleasant Road. This grant requires a local matching by the county of $200,000 or 20%.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Can I just ask one question?
Yes, ma'am.
The 200,000, that comes out of a, where did that come from?
Carowinds admission tax. When they buy, when you buy a ticket, yeah, part of the ticket.
The part that we're contributing comes out of that.
Comes from the, when people go buy a ticket at Carowinds.
That's what it read like, I wanted to make sure.
Any further questions? Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye. Oppose no. Next item, council to consider approval of a contract agreement with Kimley Horn Associates for $3,000 to perform an air quality benefit analysis for inclusion in the CMAQ grant application for improvements to the intersection of Carowinds Boulevard and Pleasant Road.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Just a question, and I know I'm new at this, but why are we voting on, is this a change to something? Because we're voting on $3,000?
That is the first step into doing what we just voted to approve.
Okay.
This is designing the CMAC so we can accept the CMAC grant and implement it, and CMAC is for mitigation of air quality, so that's where they come from.
It's usually $3,000 doesn't come before council, so I was trying to understand why it's before council, so.
That's a good question.
Bill, you want to add anything to that? Any further, yes, sir. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye. Oppose no. Next item, consider approval of an agreement to designate York County Council on Aging as the sub-grantee and administrator of the FTA Rural Transit Assistant Program Grant.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Just clarification, this is what we talked about the other day that just takes us out as a middleman, it just goes directly to them now, correct?
Yes.
Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye. Oppose no. Next item, consider approval of conservation easement agreement with Nations Ford Land Trust upon area known as the Kirsch Wildlife Management Area Extension and described more particularly as the 281.9 acres off North Burris Road, tax map number 211000006.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye. Oppose no. Next item, consider approval of a real estate property exchange at no monetary cost between the county and Withrow Ventures One LLC for the right of way for the realignment of Ratchford Road to relocate its intersection with the South Carolina five bypass in York in order to improve traffic safety.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye. Oppose no. Next item, recommendation to council of Dewberry Engineering for consulting engineering services related to the Stockbridge Sewer Collection System master plan.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye. Oppose no. Next item, council to consider approval of amendment number one to increase the contract with Kimley Horn and Associates by $273,825.49 on the 2011 York County Capital Sales and Use Tax Program, Project 11007, I-77, Gold Hill Interchange Project for additional engineering services related to infrastructure improvements at the intersection of Carowinds Boulevard, Festival Drive, Lake Mott Business Park, as identified in the Gold Hill Road Interchange Modification Report.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye. Oppose no. Next item, engineering staff and county manager recommends approval of the Electrical Utility Relocation Agreement with York Electric Co-op totaling $49,014 for the Hidden Valley Gravel Road Paving Project, and also requests approval for the county manager to sign the associated York County Standard Utility Agreement on the project.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye. Oppose no. Next item, council to consider approving and executing a Department of Revenue PT444 form for the purpose of transferring the previous five-year tax abatement from Ajax Rolling Ring and Machine LLC to FOMAS Incorporated. Ajax Rolled Ring and Machine was acquired by FOMAS Incorporated October 2014. The tax abatement will expire in 2016.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye. Oppose no. Next item, consider authorization to apply for and to accept if awarded a local emergency management performance grant in the amount of $71,854 with a match, with at match of 50% that will be achieved through in-kind services.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye. Oppose no. Next item, consider approval of an agreement with Pleasant Glen Homeowners Association for roadwork within subdivision subject to conveyance of roadways to York County.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye. We have a motion on consent agenda?
I thought John wanted to talk. Move to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye. Oppose no. Do we have any committee reports? There being none, this is where the council members...
We could, I could talk about what we met tonight at 5:30, so long ago, honestly.
Chairman Johnson.
Longer able to recall what we did. Very quickly, I can go roll through, we met and we approved people for the hospitality tax, the CHC, the Leslie Fire Board, Economic Development Board, and the Board of Assessment Appeals. Everyone, there was only one name on each one, except for one, and so we quickly moved through that, and that's all we met tonight. Other than, we did defer as to the Economic Development Board, and we voted two to one. Mr. Henderson voted against, but we voted to not appoint anyone to the Economic Development Board until such time that the Finance and Operations Committee, the Economic Development Committee, the Economic Development Board, and the Growth Partners Board met and had a discussion regarding their strategic plan, which just came out, and their consultants' recommendations to restructure their board. Rather than appoint people and then immediately restructure a board and people start leaving the board, our goal is in the next 60 to, you know, 60, 75 days to have those groups meet, determine what their board, Economic Development Board should look like from this point going forward, and then implement that at a county level, as opposed to just continually appointing people. There are only three appointments that can be made this year, we've held up on all three of them, to be fair, so. And that was our meeting tonight.
So there are vacancies on the economic development that...
There are. There's one for the Katava Nation, there's one for the Lake Wallet Chamber, and there is an at-large vacancy as of right now, right now.
And there are applications that were submitted for all of those lots?
There are applications.
Okay, if there's no other committee reports, council members, non-agenda comments, if there are any after this late hour.
I'd like to make one, I know it's 10 o'clock, and as Bump said, I'll be brief.
Just a quick question.
Janet Oakley resigned. Many of you, may not mean anything to you, but Janet Oakley is the SCDOT head, and she resigned, and there's still no bill out of the state legislature to fix our roads, and there's not going to be a bill, because they, they're leaving on Thursday most likely. There'll be no bill for maintenance, and Janet Oakley is now gone at DOT, we got a long way to go. And when people complain about roads in York County and how there are potholes, and I heard the woman say, you turn the corner, there's a pothole, and there's a pothole, well, there's about to be a whole lot more potholes, because we're running out of money and the state has failed to do their part in this process, or the state senate has failed to do its part in this process. If you have any power, if you can call someone, you're senator, we need a bill and we need it now, we cannot wait another year. We are desperate for roads money, and we're about to get this short end of the stick. I did ask staff to come back to us at our second meeting in June and brief us on the pilot program. I will be interested to see now that Janet Oakley, who we negotiated this pilot program with, is no longer running SCDOT, how much traction we have. So let's hope that, let's hope that this thing actually caught on before she decided to resign today.
Any further comments?
Now, I've assumed that my senator is for the roads, but he's not getting any traction, and if you talk to him...
I would say, if your senator is Hayes or Gregory, they are certainly, they're not, they're not the problem.
That's what I thought.
Ms. Cox.
Just commenting on a couple of things. In paragraph, in number two of our old business, we had a situation where we had to review some of the ordinances in order to beef them up, because there were 11 subdivisions that were under construction and abandoned by developers. I know that we've talked about this. Have we ever gotten a list of who those 11, the 11 subdivisions, as well as the developers and the folks that are, that are connected with that, and do we have anything in place now? And if we don't, I would like to see us follow up on that as soon as possible to ensure that we put some additional teeth behind that, that if you do that, if you come into this county and you create something and you fall behind and you leave us holding something, that you aren't permitted to come back in here and create a new development under a different name. I mean, I think we need, we need to track that down, and we need to really follow through with that piece of it. The other part, too, is I would really like to see us make some very significant effort in conflicts of interest, not only with appointments to boards, but with anyone who's bidding on any project here. I'd like for us to have a standardized list, I want to know, and I'm willing to help staff develop this, but I think it needs to be laid out. Who do you work with? Do you have any employees? What, who do you sell to? And do you have any family or family members that are on any of these boards, so that we can start weeding out and making sure that what we're doing here, and the boards and the people that are appointed to the boards, don't have a conflict, and that we can see it when it comes up? Because I may not know who you know, I may not know who your sister is. I want us to see us make headway in those two areas as soon as we possibly can.
In referencing the number two, when we first thought of this, we identified folks that owe us the money, and we know we owe them.
And I mean, drill down into, I mean, we know how this works. Companies recreate themselves and do a different name, but it's the same stakeholders. That's why I think we need to beef it up. We need to know who you are, who your stakeholders are, and we need to know, we need to create an ordinance that prevents you from coming in here under a different name to do the same thing. That's got to stop.
Yeah, that's what we're, we're doing with that. We agree a hundred percent. When I saw it, I knew it was $90,000, $100,000, I had to make the money.
It's my turn?
Yes, sir.
It's going to be real brief, and it goes to the fact that we're sitting here for four hours straight. I want to see some type of situation where after maybe two and a half hour, we take a five, 10-minute stand-up break.
Just make these parties.
Sitting here four hours straight is, I can't ride the murder vehicle.
Sometimes you have to make an executive decision, Bump.
We'll have to take that under advisement. So do, do we have a motion?
Had a college professor tell me one time...
Yeah, but you keep voting, that's the problem.
Had a college professor tell me one time, if you can ask if you got to go to the bathroom, you ain't got to go bad enough. You got to go.
I'm representing my constituency, bad enough.
I'm not a sprint.
These profound statements, I appreciate, but do we have, do we have a motion for executive session?
So much.
All right, we need it better than...
Motion for executive second, session to exceed of legal advice, proposed contractual matters, and whatever that was.
We have, we got a second. Discussion, all those in favor say, all those in favor say aye? We will be back at 10:15. Okay, there's no action items coming out of executive session, so if you have no further discussion, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We have a second. Discussion, all those in favor say aye? We are adjourned.